Good to see you too.
Board Number 10.
We were upstairs in a closed session to receive legal advice regarding a development agreement with NDC for the city-owned lot in the Junction. We did not finish what we needed to do to get legal advice, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we're going to continue that closed session tomorrow morning at 8:30 in the morning. So hopefully, we won't be here until midnight tonight. The preliminary part of our meeting is up next. We don't have any additional agenda items this evening, and I'll just point out a few upcoming meeting agenda items that may be of interest to folks. A reminder that this Wednesday evening, the 23rd, the Council will have a joint meeting with the Committee on the Environment, basically meeting as the Green Team. Next Monday, the 28th, we will lead off at 7 o'clock with a presentation from NDC on their development of the Tacoma Junction property. We'll hear how things have been going as they have been starting to work, figuring out what they're going to do. In the regular meeting, we are scheduled to have a resolution commenting on the site plan for 6413 Orchard Avenue. We're also scheduled to have a resolution placing an advisory question on the November 3rd city election ballot. And we have first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code about stormwater management fee system, and just so that people know, that is basically changing our code so that we can charge other levels of government like the county and the state. And then we have a work session, presentation, and discussion with the Council Compensation Committee and their report on council compensation. Next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow night, September 29th, is the nominating caucus at 7:30 in this room. The following Monday, October 5th, there's a public hearing on a request for traffic calming on Boston Avenue, followed by a presentation from the Grants Review Committee on Community Development Block Grant Award Recommendations, and then some work session discussions including snow removal policies and procedures, and discussion of recreation needs and opportunities in the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, including a report on the concept plan and site analysis for the site of New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, a report on the study of recreational needs of the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, update on the Washington McGlocken property, and other opportunities. And finally, Monday, October 12th, we're scheduled to have a work session discussion of a draft resolution commenting on the site plan application for the northeast quadrant of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane, which is Taco Bell. So that's just a couple items that should be of interest to folks. For the record, I have issued a proclamation recognizing voter registration day and its National Voter Registration Day tomorrow, and talks about what we do in Tacoma Park here for elections and ensuring that every eligible city resident is prepared to vote in the upcoming city election. And we're focusing on voter registration, so encouraging everybody who's 16 years of age or older to register to vote, register to vote to ensure that their registration information is correct, and encourage them to vote, either during early voting or on the day of the election. At this time, we'll then move to public comments, and we don't have any voting items this evening, so we'll take public comments on anything that's on our work session agenda or anything that is not on our agenda at all. And I encourage people to come forward, identify themselves, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Hi. Welcome back. Council, Mayor, and staff, welcome, Mr. Dan Wyron. My name's Dan Robinson. I live on Birch Avenue, and I won't be in town next Monday, so I'm going to make just short comments, very short, so you can get out of here and get back up again in the morning, about the site plan for 6413 Orchard Avenue. And I'll just reiterate that I have, well, I think there are three important things for you guys to consider. One is the importance of having adequate parking for Maggio Roofing. I support Maggio Roofing in their building the warehouse on that alley. I think it's a good idea. I'm glad to see him do it, but I think he needs adequate parking. I also think that it's important to look ahead, for him to look ahead, and for the city to look ahead, to get access through the alley up to Sligo Mill Road. I think it's a good idea to look at now, so that he can be aware that something's, that there's a ball rolling. And I think that the cutting through from Sligo Mill down to the end of the alley is possible and can be done in a not a destructive way. There are two big trees. I think you can thread through there, take a couple trees out, but then maybe replant others close by, so that there's no loss of canopy.
You're referring to the Cockerel Avenue Paper Street?
Yes, the Cockerel Avenue Paper Street. So I think it can be done with a minimum of disruption of the canopy, and I can, I think that canopy can be replaced without, without problem. I think it would help Maggio Roofing, and I think it would also help Chamberlain, who's one down on that alley. I think it would help him pull himself together and conduct his business in a, in a good way. And finally, I think it's important to not to make parking impositions on, in that area for residential, if you're going to restrict residential parking, that's fine, but not to bring it above where the residential area ends, and that's at Fifth Avenue. So I'm not for putting, imposing parking restrictions on Sligo Mill Road or on Orchard above Fifth Avenue. I think it's, it's good for business to leave things as they are. There was a, there was a no right turn off of Sligo Mill onto Orchard for many years, and when I built my building, you couldn't get there in the mornings. And no one obeyed that, that stop sign or that restriction, and finally it was removed to everyone's relief. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and the Council. My name is Gladys Harvey, and I have been a resident of the Tacoma Park, and I live on Ritchie Avenue, and I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for 30 years. And I stay with, active in the community, and I'm involved with the church and civil organizations, and I am supporting the new Taco Bell because they have an entrance in the community, and they have already made commitments to support local organizations in upcoming events. There is a definite benefit to have a wide mixture of type of business in our community, and I ask that you support the new Taco Bell. We, with all my activities, I find the drive-thru very convenient, and I will definitely eat there with my friends and family, and I thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Williams and Council members. I received a phone call from a gentleman whose name I didn't know who asked me if I was familiar with the crossroads. And I was tempted to say, what's that? But I didn't. I listened. And it was a request that I speak about my opinion about the relocation of the Taco Bell. And clearly, from the years of experience that I've had in that area, it makes sense to have that Taco Bell located where it's going to be, even though originally another location was suggested. It will improve the Holton Lane usefulness, which really still needs to be reconsidered as your eminent city manager, and I know that parking for the car wash could be rerouted behind those buildings if careful thought was given by the new owners. You wouldn't have all that backup on Holton Lane. So it's as simple as that. It's a wise move. It's a good one for the city. It's a good one for the business community. I hope you consider it.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Terrell North. I live on New Hampshire Avenue and have for about, over five years now. I am coming here today to speak in support of the Taco Bell project coming to my neighborhood. I live about a block away from where it will be, but my primary interest isn't as a neighbor, it's as, as the board chairman for Man Up. And as a matter of fact, Taco Bell actually co-sponsored our block party that many of you attended on Saturday. But the more important part of it is, this project will bring between 30 and 50 jobs to the community, and we're working, Man Up is working with Taco Bell specifically to try to identify 20 young people in our program so be able to work at the Taco Bell site. So for me, the idea that we can create some real employment opportunities to back up the educational opportunities that we try to bring, that's what makes it worthwhile to me. One of the students that my wife used to mentor, as a matter of fact, when she came to this country, they made her repeat several grades in high school, so I won't say her name, but now, after all of that work, she's now a student at Montgomery College. She wants to become a psychologist, but her Pell Grant only covers part of it. The other piece of it comes from her job at Popeyes on New Hampshire Avenue, working in that drive-thru. And I'll be honest with you, I don't even like Popeyes. I actually do eat Taco Bell. I started patronizing that Popeyes just because I'm happy that Popeyes is a partner in that young lady's success. So all the people she services one day as a psychologist or a social worker, she's not sure which one she wants to be, that comes from what she's able to do right now, the ability to be able to get to and from school, because that's how she's going to make it, that's how I made it. My very first job was, well, my second job was at a Subway's restaurant franchise, and my scholarship to college was only partial, just like her scholarship to college is partial, so I did a lot of jobs that I didn't necessarily like, that were not great jobs. They helped me be able to become who I am. They helped me get through college, go to law school, become a lawyer. So as you think about what's going on with the Taco Bell, please don't just think about it just in terms of the Taco Bell. It's great that there's food options for people. I live in that neighborhood. I want there to be more options for me to get some food, but they're employing our residents. They're a part of our neighborhoods, your constituents' success. The same way they're helping that young lady become a psychologist, they're going to help 20 kids a year, right? Because they're not going to be there forever. So if you help 20 kids next year, two years after that, you help 20 more kids, two years after that, you help 20 more kids, and it becomes a virtuous exchange. So for that reason, I hope it's all of you support Taco Bell with its drive-thru.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Talisha Circe, and I am the president of the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association. I represent about 380 households, which consists of about 2,000 individuals. I first wanted to appreciate and acknowledge all of the work that MUI staff has done to educate people within NHGCA regarding the Taco Bell development. They have been available to answer any questions that we have. That said, we did have some very vocal folks who are anti-Taco Bell, and as a result, we issued a survey this summer just to try to get some additional information regarding the concerns that people have. So the survey that we issued, we had about 76 respondents, which is in no way indicative of the opinions of the entire neighborhood, and about 74% of those individuals that responded said that they were against the Taco Bell. But I want to raise the reasons why people had concerns about Taco Bell, because I believe that they stem beyond the Taco Bell development and actually are more indicative of economic development plans for the crossroads area more generally. Specifically, the traffic, pedestrian safety, which many people in our community have already expressed, is a, is a serious issue. As we are trying to build what we understand the sector plan to be, which is a more walkable area, it's already walk at your own risk to try to cross New Hampshire Avenue at that intersection. So that is a concern, and it's a concern that has been raised by, to MUI, so they're well aware and are working within their domain to try to address some of those concerns. But I definitely want to stress to the Council, and as it will involve working with the county as well, to try to address particularly at that intersection, some of the pedestrian safety issues that will be present. Additionally, litter continues to be a problem within the crossroads area. One of the concerns in our community is that the litter will increase with the Taco Bell. It's nothing like, on a hot summer day, being a participant of the New Hampshire Ave cleanup to help you to realize the issue of litter as it relates to the crossroads area. And lastly, lots of folks are concerned about the, how the Taco Bell will fit into the economic development plan or the crossroads sector plan. One of the things that I want to charge the Council with doing is asking questions of JBG in terms of what is the development plan for the huge parcel of land that they have recently acquired. And I understand that this has happened just this summer, and they're unable to provide a lot of specifics, but it is one of the major concerns that people are raising. It's kind of hard to evaluate the value of a Taco Bell when you don't know what's going to happen with the rest of this huge parcel of land. So with that, I'm happy to share the survey results with the folks on the Council and with you, Mayor Williams, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Philip Malcolm. I'm a recent graduate from Washington and Venice University, and I too am here to talk to you guys about the Taco Bell initiative. The reason why I'm in support of it is because as the student government president, former student government president at Washington and Venice University, it was something that I did to service to the students there, to help them find jobs. And I believe that this new initiative, opening up a new Taco Bell in our city, will bring more jobs to folks like me. It was something that I enjoyed doing as their, the student government president, and it's something that I'd like to see done in our city, to bring more involvement with our youth, bringing them to the Taco Bell, giving them jobs, and keeping them busy. So I hope that you guys do endorse this project, because I think it'll be a great idea for students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, we'll move along to Council comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention, as Mr. North mentioned earlier, that the Man Up, Block Party they called it, was on Saturday. I was able to attend, as I saw some of my colleagues also there, and it was a, it was a great event. I think they did a fantastic job for their first block party, what I'm sure is going to be the first annual block party. Saw a lot of kids there, a lot of kids having fun, and it was a beautiful day. Congratulate Man Up and everyone who helped to organize that. And then I also just wanted to mention to the Council that at the Council of Governments meeting this week, saw a presentation on President Obama's 21st Century Policing Commission, and the report that came out, it was, I think, a very comprehensive look at good, how we develop good community policing relationships, and I really encourage the Council to look at that report, and I think we should at some point have a discussion about what we can learn from the report and how we can incorporate some of those ideas here in the city, and evaluate kind of where we are, because many of the items that were in the report are things that we already do. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give you guys some information on a couple events going on in the city. This Thursday, the State Highway Administration will have a community meeting on the closure of the Carroll Avenue Bridge. I suggest everyone that lives in wards 5, 4, and 3 to come out to this meeting.
In 2.
In 2. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mel, because this is going to be a very important and an opportunity for, for residents to talk to the engineers and the project manager about the detour. Most of the traffic is going to go through Ward 5, so my constituents are very nervous about this project. Moving on, there will be an early voting site in Ward 5 at the Sligo Creek Park. That's at the bottom of Sligo Creek Parkway, Kennebec Avenue, and Houston Avenue. It will be open at 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so everybody in the city can come, but of course, I would like as many Ward 5 residents to come. And then finally, I am hosting a picnic or a cookout with the Police Department cheer, and hopefully, Man Up will be there at 636 Houston. It will be from 5 to 8:00 p.m. I would love it if Taco Bell could provide some food for residents.
What day is that?
That is October 8. It would be an opportunity for you to get to meet residents, and I thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you. Well, thank you to everyone who came out to comment this evening. Especially good to see you, Ms. Harvey. Pat Rumbaugh, the Play Lady, asked me to announce at the meeting, once again, the 7th Annual Play Day to take place this Saturday, September 26th, at Tacoma Park Middle School between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and there's information online at let'splayamerica.org. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
A couple items like Councilmember Siemens. I also had the chance to attend the Man Up Block Party, and it was the first annual, and it was clearly going to be the predecessor to other annual block parties. And I was just, there was just a lot, a lot, it was being pretty much just run by all these young people, and it was really nice to see. And it was fun to be there for as long as I could stay. I did have the chance to, they had a dump tank there. And I
And I understand that this has happened just this summer and they're unable to provide a lot of specifics, but it is one of the major concerns that people are raising. It's kind of hard to evaluate the value of a Taco Bell when you don't know what's going to happen with the rest of this huge parcel of land. So, with that, I'm happy to share the survey results with the folks on the council and with you, Mayor Williams. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Philip Malcolm. I'm a recent graduate from Washington and Venice University. And I too am here to talk to you guys about the Taco Bell initiative. The reason why I'm in support of it is because as the student government president, former student government president at Washington and Venice University, it was something that I did to service to the students there to help them find jobs. And I believe that this new initiative, opening up a new Taco Bell in our city, will bring more jobs to folks like me. It was something that I enjoyed doing as their, the student government president. And it's something that I'd like to see done in our city, to bring more involvement with our youth, bringing them to the Taco Bell, giving them jobs, and keeping them busy. So, I hope that you guys do endorse this project, because I think it'll be a great idea for students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other comments? Seeing none, we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention, as Mr. North mentioned earlier, that the Manup Block Party, they called it, was on Saturday. I was able to attend, as I saw some of my colleagues also there. And it was a, it was a great event. I think they did a fantastic job for their first block party, what I'm sure is going to be the first annual block party. Saw a lot of kids there, a lot of kids having fun. And it was a beautiful day. Congratulate Manup and everyone who helped to organize that. And then I also just wanted to mention to the council that, at the council of governments meeting this week, saw a presentation on President Obama's 21st Century Policing Commission. And the report that came out, it was, I think, a very comprehensive look at good, how we develop good community policing relationships. And I really encourage the council to look at that report. And I think we should, at some point, have a discussion about what we can learn from the report and how we can incorporate some of those ideas here in the city and evaluate kind of where we are, because many of the items that were in the report are things that we already do. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to give you guys some information on a couple of events going on in the city. This Thursday, the State Highway Administration will have a community meeting on the closure of the Carroll Avenue Bridge. I suggest everyone that lives in wards five, four, and three to come out to this meeting.
In two.
In two. I'm sorry, Councilmember Mal. Because this is going to be a very important and an opportunity for residents to talk to the engineers and the project manager about the detour. Most of the traffic is going to go through Ward five, so my constituents are very nervous about this project. Moving on, there will be an early voting site in Ward five at the Sligo Creek Park. That's at the bottom of Sligo Creek Parkway, Kennebec Avenue, and Houston Avenue. It will be open at 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so everybody in the city can come, but of course, I would like as many Ward five residents to come. And then finally, I am hosting a picnic or a cookout with the police department cheer. And hopefully, Manup will be there at 636 Houston. It will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I would love it if Taco Bell could provide some food for residents.
What day is that?
That is October 8th. It would be an opportunity for you to get to meet residents. And I thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Well, thank you to everyone who came out to comment this evening. Especially, good to see you, Ms. Harvey. Pat Rumbaugh, the Play Lady, asked me to announce at the meeting, once again, the 7th Annual Play Day to take place this Saturday, September 26th, at Tacoma Park Middle School between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. And there's information online at let'splayamerica.org. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
A couple items, like Councilmember Siemens. I also had the chance to attend the Manup Block Party. And it was the first annual, and it was clearly going to be the predecessor to other annual block parties. And I was just, there was just a lot, it was being pretty much just run by all these young people, and it was really nice to see. And it was fun to be there for as long as I could stay. I did have the chance to, they had a dunk tank there. And I did have a chance to throw the softball twice at the target. You understand how that works? If you hit the target, the person goes in the tank. But would you believe it? I hit the target with my second throw, right?
And the person didn't go?
And the thing didn't work. So, I'm going to sue somebody, but my recommendation, maintaining this line of humor, is that next year, rather than just having kids sitting on that little board, they ought to invite council members and other dignitaries in stuffed shirts that we all know who would like to sit up on the board. And they can charge a fee for every ball that gets thrown by somebody over the age of 15 or 16. And make them do fundraising, and I'd be happy to be dumped if that would help. So...
Let me just add there real quick that that used to happen at the Tacoma Park Street Festival. And on a number of occasions, I was the dunkie.
Oh, were you?
Yes. So, there is precedent for doing that.
That's what they were saying, dunkie. I misunderstood.
I, last Thursday, I had the chance to attend the meeting of, on the Purple Line update at the Civic Center in Silver Spring, put on by the Maryland Mass Transit Administration. It was just pretty much an information meeting. Couple key things that came out of it is that they're still waiting to get verification of full funding from the federal government. That is anticipated, but it's not yet. Second of all, they have, they spoke at some length about changes to the project as a result of Governor Hogan's request to reduce the cost of the project. But they emphasized that while a number of changes were made, the actual scope of the project is not at all affected. There's a whole long list of stuff I'm not going to go into here. But one thing, for example, is that instead of having cars running at a six-minute headway, they'll be running at a seven-and-a-half-minute headway. But the concession, the bids will be finalized from the four concessionaires this November. The bid opening is expected to be sometime next year, or the awarding of the bid sometime early next year. And they expect the construction to begin before the end of 2016, and the project to be completed in 2021. Which means, thanks to the delays incurred by the governor, we've lost a year in terms of the timing of this project. But nevertheless, some costs have been reduced, which will save taxpayers money, and we are going to get a Purple Line from all appearances.
And things like headway is going to always be increased later?
Yes, they certainly can.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. I reported this to the state, but if the city staff could follow up as well, there was a leak of what appeared to be sewage or some sort of effluent at the bottom of the hospital property on the hill just south of Maple Avenue.
Yes, I reported that.
Great, thank you. And then, on the issue of the dunk tank, if Councilmember Schultz, I'm sorry you didn't stay for a little bit longer, because I was actually in the dunk tank a number of times.
Oh, no.
And yeah, it turns out that people really do like to dunk council members.
I can imagine. I would.
Yeah. They got good use out of the 15 minutes before the truck came to take it away. And I wholly support the idea of doing that in the future for fundraising or any other purpose. Thank you.
And it's better not to do it in October when the street festival is, because it gets a little chilly. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. My mic on or off?
Try again?
No.
Nope.
No?
I'm not going to do the thing where I can touch it again.
Okay. So, this was a really busy weekend, I think, for all of us, and I just want to thank the folks who put on the Folk Festival this year. It was a wonderful event yesterday. The other thing I want to mention is Councilmember Grimes and I had the meeting regarding the Piney Branch Pool last Thursday night, and I want to thank Councilmember Grimes for moderating that meeting. And you will be meeting with county council members October 5th, and we'll keep updating people on that meeting. I would like to ask the city manager to follow up on one thing with the police chief. It seems that our community cam program, there's some glitch with it.
With the Safe Cam?
Yeah, the Safe Cam program. It seems that we're, they're not recording the folks who are signing up for it. And if we could just have a report back in a couple of weeks, and also give better instructions to members of the community exactly how the police are using that. I've received a number of questions regarding, do residents need to call the police? Are the police going to contact them? And I think clearer instructions to residents would be helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Attorney General.
And I intended to go to a number of events this weekend. I recognized, after my field trip to Alexandria to their sewage treatment plant on Friday, that I can only do so much in a day as I get my strength back after my operation. So, I fully intended to go to the Manup Block Party. Didn't make it there, but I did get to the McLaughlin Woods Block Party over on Circle Avenue on Saturday afternoon. And I was glad I did, because one of the adjacent residents to that property who lived there pretty much all her life, and who recently moved to a senior facility, Dorothy Barnes, was able to come to the block party, and I did get to see her and listen to her talk a little bit about her recollections of the, of that property, particularly during World War II and Victory Gardens that people had there. So, it was nice to get to that celebration. Councilmember Grimes, you had an additional comment?
Yeah, thank you. Since Councilmember Stewart brought up the meetings on the Piney Branch Elementary School Pool, it's worth mentioning that there will be a public joint meeting of the county councils' Planning Housing and Economic Development and Education Committees. It's the one, isn't it? On October the 12th, Monday, October the 12th. I believe it's at 10:30, and that will be a public meeting in Rockville. It should also be broadcast. So, that Piney Branch Elementary School Pool will be on the agenda then.
That takes care of council comments. We'll move along to city manager's comments.
Thank you. I've passed out my comments. Did want to follow up some of the items that were raised last week by council members. The Elm Avenue sidewalk installation is, we're still waiting to get some approvals on that. One of the things that I just want to mention is that, given the concerns that we have all had about how well or not well the concrete sidewalks hold up in the winter, we are stopping sidewalk construction earlier in the season than we have in the past. So, depending on if we're able to get all the approvals and start the Elm Avenue sidewalks before mid-October, we can do it. Otherwise, we'll need to do it in the spring.
And I'm sorry, what are the approvals? Through the Safe Frauds to Schools program or some other?
We got the Safe Frauds to Schools program. Apparently, there's some county approval I need on that, that we need to get related to that, and the materials approval needs to be approved with that. I also noted that Johnson Controls, that had been doing a sidewalk, a streetlight analysis, kind of did its initial part and realized that it wasn't, I guess, they didn't have an advantage to move forward, so they've stepped out. We're having a similar evaluation completed by a company called ABM, and we expect to receive that initial evaluation this fall, and then we'll need to come back to council about what we do with the streetlight upgrades after that. We have painted the center line down Maple Avenue. We will be doing more crosswalk painting in September, I mean, in October, maybe in September. We are waiting for some of the Safe Frauds to Schools work to, happen to have the raised crosswalks there, but we're painting the crosswalks first, so that that can move forward. We did also move the timing up on the flashing lights, as was requested by a resident. We've also been looking at putting in a few more signs on Maple Avenue that say 15 miles per hour during school times with the, kind of revised school times with the earlier hours. It'll be several weeks before those get installed.
Thank you.
Do want to mention that on Thursday, Gina Mathias, our Sustainability Manager, will be doing a community meeting in this room at 7:00. She's going to be talking about how the different neighborhoods are doing against each other in the Neighborhood Energy Challenge, how we're doing as a community in the whole Georgetown energy contest. And they'll leave door prizes and information on how people can save energy. So, we really encourage people to come out for that. Tomorrow is National Voter Registration Day, and so to promote voter registration, we're going to have staff wearing little "Are you registered?" stickers, and we're going to be registering people here in this building tomorrow, even through the evening. We encourage people who want to be registered, come on down. Councilmember Grimes mentioned Play Day on Saturday. This particular Play Day includes the always-popular but noisy Touch a Truck. So, for those people, Jason, your son, has not done a Touch a Truck here yet. It's one of those things that every kid has to be able to blow those car horns, truck horns. The sewage leak near Sligo Creek was reported early this morning. It actually was reported by a citizen yesterday. They smelled something, but they didn't find it until this, early this morning. And they have blocked the flow. They've had a contractor on site all day. I don't know if they've fixed it yet, but there was an eight-inch terracotta pipe with roots in it that had quite a blockage. And so, that's, so they're replacing that whole segment. It should be done by tomorrow. Our understanding, and we've had a number of governmental staff out on the site from different agencies, that the sewage did not get to the water of the creek, but it is something that they were looking at very carefully.
I mean, I saw the leak running at 6 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, Sunday.
Okay.
And reported it, I tried to report it first through Montgomery County 311.
Yeah.
And when I called them, they told me they were only taking complaints about ride-on. Just so you know.
Oh, my.
It surprises me that the, that it didn't reach the water, because the odor was downstream quite a ways.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Then I called the state and reported it to the state, talked to a live person. They took the complaint, and my understanding was they were following up.
Okay.
I can't remember the name of the person I spoke to, but I wrote it down at the time.
Okay.
And at that time, it was clear that the water was going, you know, the sewage was flowing across the creek, under the temporary roadway surface, and, I mean, I'm just sorry, across the trail through the, sort of, the construction zone for the bridge.
Right. I know that they were, that they actually rerouted the trail this morning to try to get around there.
And vice, you know, at 6 o'clock in the morning, it was already, you know, you could see the damp seep on its way to the extreme. So, I'd be very surprised if, you know, 24 hours later, it hadn't made it in.
I appreciate that you made those calls. You can also let me know, so I can make sure our staff is involved.
I mean, that's just a good example, though, of where state and county government are supposed to have it, right?
They are supposed to, they're supposed to jump on it.
Operating big sewers from industrial facilities or hospitals is not supposed to be, I think, per se, the city's responsibility, so...
No, that's not, although we obviously are very protective of the area that we live near.
Will there be any testing of the creek to see if there's any sewage?
I don't know if I'll find out what steps they've taken. The next thing I'd like to mention is that our finance department is actually going to get the renovation that we've talked about sometime, for some time. And so, that work is anticipated to begin this Thursday. What's going to happen is that the staff will be out of the office for a couple of weeks, and at least, starting on Thursday, instead of paying at the finance window on the third floor, we're going to have finance staff that deal with that at the police department parking window, where they can accept the money there. So, we'll have, it will be well-signed. Most of the staff will be working out of the atrium room on the third floor, but we will have the people that take the money at the pilot, at the police department level. The, also wanted to mention that Ward Three Street paving is going to be happening. Was going to start this week, but there was a problem on Fifth Avenue with a different leak, and so it's going to start next week. At that point, 15 street segments will be repaved, and so we'll let you know if there's any change to that.
I must have driven on each one of those 15 segments.
And, and as has been mentioned, both Jason and I will be at the ICMA conference in Seattle next week, so we will not be here at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any follow-up comments to the city manager on that? Okay, we will move along to our first work session item, which is a presentation and discussion of the site plan application for the Taco Bell.
Bear with me for a moment, we're going to have to do a PowerPoint, and I think it's been loaded.
Mr. Osberg, are you going to introduce anybody?
Sure. Good evening. So, this is the first item on the agenda is the Taco Bell site plan development, and there are several folks here tonight from Lurch Early and Brewer, as well as the engineering firm, and I believe JBG as well, to discuss the project, answer questions, sort of go over the process with you all. So, first, I'll just introduce Stacy Silver. She's been working on the, on this project for quite some time, and...
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stacy Silver, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lurch Early and Brewer, and we appreciate you having us here tonight. Can you hear me okay? There are several folks that are here with us tonight. We have Will Lewis, who is representing the applicant, Moy. We have Carter Davis, who's representing JBG, and JBG are the owners of the property. Brad Fox of Bowler Engineering, Mike Lenhart, who's a traffic engineer, and my colleague Liz Rogers is also here. We're here to discuss Moy's proposal for a 2,063-square-foot restaurant with drive-thru located on the northeast quadrant of New Hampshire and Holton Lane. The property is owned CRT. We have had the benefit of Park and Planning and the state reviewing our initial plans, and they have found in their preliminary evaluation that it complies with Montgomery County Code and is in conformance with the master plan and other applicable requirements. We're going to go through some background with regards to Taco Bell in terms of its operation, interior design of the, of the store, and its menu. This is not applicable necessarily to the code requirements and the approval, but we thought it might give you some context in terms of Taco Bell and what they're trying to accomplish here. We've been working at this for about eight to nine months, and during that time period, we've been doing a lot of outreach with the community. We have met with city staff, with Park and Planning staff, and we've gotten feedback from all of these folks. And the plans that we're going to be sharing with you today reflect the changes that we've incorporated based upon those comments. Taco Bell has been part of the community for a while. As you all know, it was located on New Hampshire and University and was taken for the transit center, and Taco Bell was very excited about coming back to the community. In our outreach efforts, we've been hearing from folks who are excited about having Taco Bell back, and also to have a variety of choices in the area, and are looking forward to that. So, who is Taco Bell? I think we all have an image of who Taco Bell is. It is a quick-service restaurant, and, but they've changed. And it's been an education in terms of who they are, and then we've had questions. I mean, I think we all have kind of a perception of what Taco Bell is. I know when I went, when I was younger, I remember the white plastic seats and kind of sliding across and getting my food. And things have changed, and I wanted to share with you a little bit about how things have changed. So, this first image is a picture of the interior of the Taco Bell. And as you can see here, Taco Bell has muted colors that they're utilizing. They have, as you can see, tables, kind of a wood finish, a warm, a warm feeling. They have Wi-Fi that they are having in this store, and they also have plugs for people to plug in. We've been hearing that there's not many options, for example, the breakfast hour. I've been to Starbucks in the area, and it's very small, there are not really tables. Some of the things that we've heard from the community is that if you did go to Starbucks, the plugs are up high, and... the plugs are up high, and here, we've looked at where we could position the plugs so people can stay. So it's a little bit different than one may think. This store is encouraging people to both come via foot as well as come via their card. New Hampshire, as you know, is a very well-traveled thoroughfare north-south, and we expect that it will continue to be so in the future. One thing we had heard from the community was in terms of timing of when the store would open, and in our application materials, our initial thought was that it was going to open a little bit later, like at 10:00, and we've changed that. It's going to open at 7:00, which will give folks an opportunity to actually come into the store itself and not just go through the drive-through, to be able to utilize it and hopefully stay for a little while. Here's some pictures of the exterior of the Taco Bell. We know that this is an important corridor in the city of Tacoma Park, and Taco Bell has treated their building accordingly, and they've focused a lot in terms of the architectural details. And this gives you a sense of what this building will look like. Again, they focused on using muted colors. There's a stone feature in terms of, as you see on the side, onto the left of the door. And we've, this has been an evolution, and I think we're very excited about how the architecture's turned out. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the elevations and some of the changes we've made in response to some of the comments. In terms of Taco Bell's menu, Taco Bell is continuously evolving its menu based upon the wants of its patrons. And one of the things that they've done over the last five years or so is that they've developed a menu called the Fresco option. And what it does is it allows patrons to choose to have their food ordered Fresco, which means that everything that's on this menu is, has 50% less fat and calories than something else you might order on the Taco Bell menu. The Taco Bell menu also has both vegetarian and vegan options. There are no ingredients of animal origin in the preparation of Taco Bell's, pico de gallo, pinto beans, black beans, rice tortillas, and flatbreads. This is an aerial, I know you all are very familiar, the star is where the proposed Taco Bell is, and I'll get into more details as we go through. So existing conditions. What we've been hearing from the community, and obviously we've seen the site itself, not necessarily a very pleasant environment today on New Hampshire, right at this intersection and Holton. There are no street trees along New Hampshire Avenue. The site itself is almost 100% impervious, and there's no stormwater management on-site today. And what we're going to be discussing is how we hope we can improve the situation. So when we first started through this process, we focused on the sector plan and also Tacoma Park's own Holton Lane area proposed plan. And as we were doing this, we obviously were looking at these documents in terms of designing our plans to be in conformance with those. Some of the things that the Holton Lane vision talked about was the fact that the current parking lot in front of Aldi lacked a defined entrance and edge. I talked about building in the corner would help define the entrance in the Aldi parking lot, and again, that's what we were looking at. We also examined the Crossroads Master Plan and Design Guidelines, which emphasize redeveloping in surface parking lots, improving pedestrian environments, and also talked about interim type of use. I guess the elephant in the room, it's, this is not a mixed-use project, but the project provides an important opportunity to redevelop a small lot. This is, what we're developing on is an independent lot that's separated from the rest of the Aldi overall property. And JBG and JBGR are here today, but what we're proposing is not going to preclude redevelopment of the overall shopping center, and you'll hear more from JBG, who can talk directly to it. What we're hoping, though, is that with this development, that we are going to be doing some improvements over the short term. So in terms of how does this property activate the pedestrian environment? So as you see here, the Holton Lane vision recommended having a building on the corner, and that's what we did. So unlike a typical quick-service restaurant, this building is right up along the street. We put the drive-through not between the building and the street, it's basically set back. We've focused on buffering with landscaping and also with the building. We'll talk a little bit about the seating area. So this, let's see if I can use my cursor. I don't know if you can see that one you're looking at, but the seating area, we've placed in the location along Holton Lane, and this has actually been moved from comments that we've heard from the community initially. Initially, it was along the New Hampshire Avenue side of the building, and we heard that people would prefer to have it on Holton Lane, so we moved it. The, the building defines the corner, and it helps to funnel pedestrians from both New Hampshire Avenue and from Holton Lane. This building has two pedestrian access points. We have one in the front, along with New Hampshire, and we have one along Holton as well. We've also agreed to provide a pad for a new bus shelter that's being proposed, and I understand you all are discussing tonight, that we will install along New Hampshire Avenue. One of the most significant pedestrian improvements that Moy has agreed to do is, actually addresses something that Talisha Tursi had mentioned, and that is with pedestrian safety along, across New Hampshire Avenue. Moy has agreed to basically pay for and install a signal to, pedestrian signal along this area here in New Hampshire Avenue. Right now, there is nothing here, and I think this is where we've been hearing a lot from the community of dangerous conditions. So we are going to be installing a new signal as well as probably some crosswalk. This crosswalk striping is, is not very good out there. In terms of the building design, we talked a little bit about that. This is not Taco Bell's prototypical building. They've done some changes, and I wanted to just show you one example of some of the changes that we've done. This is the original elevation along Holton Lane, and as you can see here, we've done modifications to it. We now have glass and glazing windows along the whole entire elevation along Holton, which we think will help elevate, activate that space, and really, I think, does a big improvement. It's actually exceeds the requirements of the code in terms of the amount of transparency that we're providing along Holton. Other question we had, had been asked is, as you can see here, are you all able to see my arrow?
Yes.
Okay. So there's also a wall that goes here, it deals with the change in elevation, and we were asked what this material was, and candidly, we had not gotten to that point in terms of the material of this wall, but we're definitely open to suggestions. We've thought of different things in terms of block materials, different colors to complement the building, but we're definitely open to suggestions with regards to that. On the architecture, so this just gives you another sense in terms of a closer look at the pedestrian environment. So again, we have an entrance point along New Hampshire, and we have another one here along Holton Lane, and you can see that it's, it's by where the outdoor seating area is that we're proposing. We're also proposing to add shrubs along the New Hampshire Avenue frontage. That's going to provide screening to the existing parking lot beyond and to the drive-through. And as you can see, we have shade trees that are being planted along New Hampshire Avenue, and the same along Holton Lane as well. We have shrubs that are going along the elevation. In terms of parking, we just wanted to talk a little bit about parking. That was one of the questions we had come up. Again, as I mentioned, this is a subdivided lot that we're developing on, and the parking requirement on-site is 11 spaces. We're providing 28. There's shared parking within the overall shopping center. There are 206 spaces that are required on the overall shopping center, and with the addition of the proposed Taco Bell, there'll be 269 spaces. So again, we still have enough spaces to accommodate all the uses. With regards to circulation, was mentioned about the car wash earlier, and we focused on the car wash as well. This gives you a better sense of it. So in terms of how folks will access the Taco Bell, there are two access points into the shopping center along Holton Lane, and there's also an access point along New Hampshire Avenue. We are going to be adding directional signs at the various intersections so that people understand that there are options to get into the shopping center and also to the Taco Bell. The question about the car wash, appreciate those comments. We actually had one of our traffic engineers go out and just take a look at it because we wanted to make sure that everything worked. And what he found was that, as I'm sure you all have experienced, there are times in which people on a very sunny day, that the cars do back up along Holton Lane, but there are two lanes of, two lanes along Holton. So even if there are cars that are backed up along Holton getting into the car wash, cars can still go along east along Holton. If you were trying to turn right from New Hampshire Avenue and there was a backup, you could either wait to turn right, but why this is so important to us, too, in terms of directional sign, is that we're going to have a directional sign here, so if you decide not to wait, you have the option of going along New Hampshire Avenue. If you're coming from any other direction, if you're going south on New Hampshire, you of course can make your turn, and the car wash has no impact on your ability to get We've heard questions about trash, and we've been focused on that. So trash pickup around the store. There is, every hour, workers in the Taco Bell actually go around the perimeter of the store and inside the store to do trash pickup. On the overall grounds, it's done two to three times a day. Typically, it shift changes. So they also are policing their own store and the immediate grounds. We also have been asked about putting in additional trash receptacles, which we are agreeing to do. We're planning to put one by the front of the store, by the patio, and also, we're proposing to put a new one along New Hampshire Avenue by the bus stop. So another means for people to have a place to put their trash. With regards to some, again, environmental improvements, as I mentioned, we are going to be treating quality and quantity on the property, and the stormwater management concept has already been approved by the city engineer. And we're looking at various other things that might be done. We're looking at providing LED lights inside and outside the facility, and we're also considering doing something called a cool roof, which helps with energy efficiencies within the restaurant as well. With employment, as you heard from Man Up, we're very excited about that partnership. And before I get into that, I did want to just add a couple of other things in terms of Moy's commitment to the segment of the community. One is, is that for their own employees, they offer college tuition reimbursements and grants, and they also offer discounts to their employees and families. With regards to Man Up, Moy typically partners when it comes into a community with the Boys and Girls Club, because there does seem to be a synergy. But when we started to do some outreach with the community, we learned about Man Up and all the amazing things that they're doing with educational achievement, and we saw it as an amazing partnership, candidly. The folks at Man Up are doing an amazing job with youth, and these, these folks are trained, and it actually is a nice way for Taco Bell also to find qualified employees. And as Mr. North had indicated, we are partnering with them. We've set goals in terms of hiring Man Up youth as well as others in the community. We're going to be sponsoring a job fair, and we're, Moy is very excited about that partnership. At this point, I thought I would turn it over to Mr. Carter over here, who's with JBG and JBGR, just to talk a little bit about the overall shopping center, to give you a sense of how this fits in with the whole.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carter Davis. I'm with JBGR Retail, and we are the new owner of the Crossroads Shopping Center, along with JBG, in the joint venture that we, that we purchased the center with. We bought it in late June, bought it in late June. One of, as we, and we bought it from Nightingale Properties, not sure. I know they got a little bit engaged with Melanie on the, you know, I'm blanking on the name for her program, but I don't think Nightingale, from what we could tell, did not get terribly engaged with the property. They owned it for one year. They, as soon as they bought it, they really were looking to turn around and sell it. So we bought this property along with two other smaller ones in Virginia, in Pikesville, Maryland. This is really the big one of the three that we bought, the one that was most interesting to us. One of the reasons we bought it is clearly, you know, Walgreens and Aldi created a great two anchor tenants, and when you look at it from a commercial real estate standpoint, you know, you got to look at it from an underwriting financial standpoint, and they are both great credit tenants. After those two, there was not, as you looked across the spectrum of 30-plus tenants, there are not a lot of national credit tenants there. Sure, there's Citibank, 7-Eleven, there are a few others, but one of the things that was really appealing to us was that Taco Bell was, you know, looking to come here. We have a signed lease with a national tenant, a national brand that was looking to invest millions of dollars in this property. To us, that was something that was very important and showed that, you know, honestly, while we, many of you may know, we own a lot of real estate in the area, and we are very familiar with Washington DC. I haven't worked exactly in this area, and to my knowledge, JBG hasn't anything in this area in the recent future, and so it was a telling sign to us that Taco Bell was looking to, they wanted to be in the area. So not only did it, you know, validate that the whole area, but it also validated the center for us. And it was really a key ingredient in our decision to pursue it. It was something we highlighted in our investment committee memo. And, you know, it's, you have to take baby steps, so I've heard from a few community members in a couple of public meetings that, you know, would like a white-cloth restaurant, and we'd like this, and we'd like that, and I think all of us like to get to that point, but you have to take sort of small steps. I think Taco Bell's investment in the corner is really going to help, and it's, it's a step in the right direction. So it's something that was very appealing to us in terms of sort of cementing the location and, you know, the viability of the center. So, you know, we're certainly supportive of it and hope it passes. I will address, I know I've heard several times in other meetings, and it was raised earlier by someone here, you know, when we bought the center, I've been fairly clear with other people when we've discussed this, we bought it for what it is today. We looked at what it is today, we underwrote what is there today. That is what we are, you know, intending to hold for a while. We are very cognizant of the redevelopment potential. You know, as many of you know, we, our bread and butter is oftentimes redevelopments. But we have not, we're not going into this with a sort of planned redevelopment. It's one of those where we like what we are buying. We are aware, and we will certainly monitor, you know, how the economy goes, how the purple line, the transportation center, and it's something that we revisit occasionally, but it is not something where we have, we are working on active redevelopment plans, and that's not really in our sort of underwriting at the moment. Taco Bell is, you know, they're taking a very key, important corner, but as many, as you all know, it's an expansive center along several major roads. The Aldi lease prohibits any redevelopment in that parking lot for, you know, they've got a lease through 2028, and then they've got options for probably decades beyond that. And for some of you who don't know, this is one of Aldi's top-performing stores on the East Coast. They do very good business there. So we hope and expect them to be there for a long time. So, you know, in retail, the grocery anchor store is not usually a big fan of anyone building in their parking lot. It's all about visibility, parking, access for a grocery store. So I think that parking lot's going to probably be there for the foreseeable future. In my mind, again, without us, you know, having hired anyone or looking at this too seriously, if there is going to be redevelopment, it most likely would be the remainder of the center. The Aldi portion is probably going to remain, it would probably be the last portion that would be redeveloped, mostly because of the leases in place. So we don't view this Taco Bell as at all, you know, in any way inhibiting the future redevelopment, if and when it does occur. You know, I think it's, it's going to remain probably, that corner is probably going to remain as it is for a while, and hopefully, the rest of it will get redevelopment, redeveloped sometime soon, but it's, it would probably end up happening in phases. And so we, you know, we think the Taco Bell is a great step towards, you know, sort of raising the overall quality of the property, and we don't view it as, you know, being a roadblock to any future redevelopment, if and when it occurs. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was very helpful to explain how you see the possibilities for the Aldi site.
Just in closing, again, thank you very much for having us here tonight. We're happy to answer any questions that you have, and Moy, on behalf of Moy, they look forward to investing in the community and being part of the community long-term. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that, that last part was very helpful in understanding kind of the potential long-term impact and the, and the place that this potential development. the potential long-term impact and the place that this potential development fits into that. Because I know that a lot of people have been concerned about, well, gee, what are the redevelopment plans? And isn't this, shouldn't this really be anticipating that part of that? And so that context is very helpful. Do my colleagues have questions? Councilmember Schultz.
I wanted to know if you can talk a little bit about your analysis of traffic impact of the drive, of the Taco Bell, obviously, the drive-through, because that's the thing that seems to be of great concern to the, to the residents.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. And we did conduct a traffic impact study for this project. We started by coordinating scoping agreement with Park and Planning. The traffic impact study was conducted according to the LATR guidelines. We looked at the intersection of New Hampshire at Holton Lane and New Hampshire at the next signal north, with two shopping centers on either side. The, we conducted traffic counts at both of those intersections, included background developments, and then the site traffic. And the standard test in the LATR guidelines is to use a critical lane volume methodology. And they have a CLV, or Critical Lane Volume Standard Threshold, is 1,600 in this area. And that threshold is, it varies for different policy areas, but this policy area is 1,600.
1,600 vehicles per...
The critical lane volume is a formula. You look at the traffic on all four approaches. You look at the through, the turn, the left turns, the right turns on all four approaches. You look at the number of through lanes and turning lanes, and there, there are lane use factors you apply to all four movements based on the number of lanes and the volumes. And it gives you end result, the critical lane volume. And so 1,600 is the standard. Those two intersections come in about just over half of the allowable standard. So between 800 and 900, they're well below or well within the allowable thresholds. This site would generate, in the morning and evening peak hour, about between 30 and 45 patrons per hour, entering and exiting the site by vehicle. There may be more by foot, but by vehicle. And then some of those would be drive-through usage, and some would be park and come into the store and get their food.
That's during the peak hour?
Those are during the peak hours, which is when we're required to do our analysis during the morning and the evening peak hours. We do our traffic counts from 6:30 to 9:30 in the morning, and from 4:00 to 7:00 in the evening. And then of those two, three-hour periods, we determine what is the peak one hour of traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. And those are the hours we evaluate.
Yeah, let me ask you this. I mean, New Hampshire Avenue by previous studies carries, I'm told, something like 30,000 automobiles per day, both directions, as it passes through New Hampshire, through Tacoma Park. And, which is kind of an incomprehensible number. My house backs up onto New Hampshire Avenue, so I get to listen to it all the time. And it's just a steady, steady drone of traffic. And I appreciate that it is really a major arterial serving the northeast quadrant of the metropolitan area. Goes all the way, way out, goes all the way downtown practically. But in terms of the, can you kind of give us some sort of a picture of the difference that Taco Bell will make? I mean, just in that, in terms of the amount of cars it might add that would not otherwise be in their sort of a net impact? Because a lot of, a lot of people seeing, have the feeling that the Taco Bell is just going to be, become a generator of traffic, that would not otherwise be there and hence add to the, the...
Sure.
Do you have a sense of that?
So of the, the numbers that I said before, if you have between 30 and 45 vehicles entering and exiting the site in the peak hours, about half of those are pass-by trips. So it's traffic that is, that was already on the road network. They're driving to work in the morning or home in the evening, and they pull in, grab a bite to eat while they're on their way. So they're not new trips that were already on the roadway. And so when you look at the critical lane impact at these two intersections, it's very small. It's less than 1%, probably less than a half a percent that Taco Bell actually has on these two intersections. And that diminishes as you go further out, because, you know, traffic spreads out and thins out. It's a very, very negligible impact. DOT and State Highway have reviewed the study. We had a Development Review Committee meeting a week or two ago. And, you know, there were, there were no comments on the report, other than the pedestrian safety of the north leg of Route 650. The three other legs have crosswalks that are marked and have pedestrian signals. So you can push a button, you wait for a signal, and you have a safe crossing. The north leg is, for some reason, the only leg that does not have a pedestrian signal. So we will be installing that in conjunction with our development.
Okay, thank you. I did read the, your traffic study, believe it or not. I'm probably the only person in America that has, but I actually felt like I had to do that. I would like to ask a question of JBGR, if I may, Mr. Davis. I, the problem here at this intersection is caused by the car wash. We've got a problem now that Taco Bell isn't even there. So we can't blame Taco Bell. And that is, as traffic engineers have shown, and the residents in my neighborhood in Ward 6, and both sides, you know, know very well what happens when the car wash is having a happy day for them. The traffic backs up onto Holton Lane. It's a single lane. It backs around, sometimes it even goes into New Hampshire Avenue. I wrote you, sent you an email, I don't know, a month or so ago, asking you to look into the idea, since now you own both sides of Holton Lane, including the car wash and the affiliated tire store and the post office behind it. If there was some way to reconfigure the line, lineup, so that it doesn't come right out onto Holton Lane, and if it could be run up behind the post office, and so that people would be able to access that, that, the line of cars to get into the car wash further up in Holton Lane, up near the Kadimi Chiropractic, which is not your property. That's, I think that's outside the boundary, but you might know where it is. I didn't get, did not get a response on that. And I don't know whether it's even, it's even feasible. But if something like that could be practically done, it would solve a lot of problems, one of which is for the post office. You talk to the people, the managers of the post office, and they are just angrily, just really angry and frustrated by the fact that they lose control over their space. There's a yellow line on the asphalt that demarks where post office lease ends and the car wash lease ends. And the car wash totally disregards it. They have their cars all the way up, back up the property behind the post office, doing, you know, washing cars and polishing and doing all this other stuff. And it makes it difficult for a customer to pull into the little parking area adjacent, those four, five, or six slots there. And it's not just the customers, it's the people that work in the post office, the federal employees, who are really upset about it. And we need, no matter what happens to this project, we need to get a solution to that. But I think if you can solve that problem, it's going to make the success of the Taco Bell, if it gets built, better. And that's in everybody's self-interest. Because the last thing any of us want is a Taco Bell that's suffering from not, from customers getting irritated and saying, I'm not, whatever I do, I'm not going into that one, because you can't get in, and once you get in, it's hard as heck to get out. So I just, I'm addressing this to you here, because I didn't get a response to my email. If that, I'm just simply asking the open-ended question. If, is that something that, as the owner of the property, you can, you can address? I'm not asking you if it can be done. I just need you to be able to, to be able to say that it's something that you can address.
Is this one, or?
Yeah.
Well, you and I have spoken about this a couple times before, and I apologize. I don't, I assume you addressed the email to me. I don't remember receiving it. I've certainly missed a few emails before. So I'm usually very good about responding to emails, but I anticipated the question anyway. So I definitely, you know, as we talked about a few times before. So I've looked at that over the last week or two, and was actually on-site this morning, and last week was looking at the post office lease. I think one of my concerns that may not be able to reroute it is the post office lease, and I can't remember exactly the numbers, but they, they lease maybe 5,000 square feet of building space. They also lease 4,000 square feet of, and what's described in the lease is rear parking and loading or access. There, of course, conveniently is no site plan attached to that lease, but there should be. It was in Exhibit A or something, but I flipped back. There's no, there's no site plan. I can't tell exactly what their parking area is, but as I was out there this morning, I'm pretty sure that they control sort of that whole rear area, including the drive aisle and parking as part of the lease premises, which means we can't really, I can't route whole cars and have a whole line of traffic lining up behind the post office. What's interesting is I haven't heard that the post office employees are quite, you know, unhappy with the situation right now. I haven't, I've, I've been there on a weekend, maybe I haven't been there. I have not been there yet when it's been coming around the corner. So I haven't seen that there are cars that are all the way up in the side of the parking lot. I find that a bit surprising, that that happens. Interesting. But I have to, I question whether, if the post office employees, if they don't like that, I've got to think they're not going to like at all having a steady stream of cars behind where, you know, trucks can't pass through. So I, you know, I just, I think logistically, it, it may not improve things for the post office. And I do have some concerns about that the, the post office sort of controls that area as part of their lease. I don't, I don't have 100% answer on that, though, as I said. I couldn't tell from the lease.
Okay. I'm not expecting 100% answer here. And I'm just saying, is that the post office seems unequipped to be able to police their area and keep the car wash operations off of their, off of their leased property.
We, as the landlord, can step in on that front.
I think you should, I would hope that you could do that.
And then we can, we'll reach out to the post office and try to get in touch with their, you know, I don't know what the title is, but any other retail establishment, their manager, and try to figure that out. We can definitely help them police that, because that, yeah, I didn't realize that was happening. So I, hopefully we can help the post office in that sense. I, you know, I don't know what else. I agree, it seems like a nice solution to be able to take the queue off of Holton Lane. But I do have some concern. And, you know, the other concern I have, honestly, is that I don't know how that affects the car wash. You know, I, candidly, I, if that became a real option, I'd want to go to that tenant and ask, you know, is this, talk to me about how this affects your operations. And I'm sure their answer is going to be, well, we don't want to do that, just because it's not the way it's been done in the past. It doesn't mean it couldn't change. But that was sort of my secondary question. But honestly, I sort of stopped looking into it when I saw the post office lease and got concerned about having a steady stream.
No, I understand you have to take, do this one step at a time. We just need you to be able to figure out what the, what it is you can, you can figure out. I mean, the, the car wash is kind of a regional attraction. It's not a neighborhood attraction, like the Taco Bell will be, because, you know, people aren't going to come to the Taco Bell from five miles away. They come for this car wash from goodness knows where. And it's, it's an extremely popular car wash. I'm sure they're a very successful car wash. But the truth is, if that company decided to relocate its car wash, I don't think anybody would shed tears about it. Just a hint there.
They would shed soap suds.
Soap suds. That's, that's all I have for now.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Silver, I appreciate you coming this evening, the rest of the team. First question I have, I understand that you've been working with Man Up, and you guys are going to potentially sign an agreement, or have you signed an agreement? What's the status of that?
We don't have a formal agreement with Man Up. However, we have basically a correspondence that we've done between the two of us, that basically lists what we talked about today and certain goals in terms of the number of folks that we are going to be hiring, in terms of the job fair, et cetera. So that is something that we perceive we're doing. It really wasn't timely to kind of do anything until we know that Taco Bell is able to actually move into this location.
So you are going to move forward with an MOU or something with them?
Yeah, something, yeah.
Yes, okay. Regarding youth employment, you said you think you're going to hire around 20 kids from the area. What about job fairs? Do you anticipate maybe doing an annual job fair? Because, you know, for my ward, one of the poor wards in the city, young people are always asking me for opportunities, jobs, summer jobs, you know, after-school jobs, whatever. So it would be great if you could not just do something at the Taco Bell as a job fair, but, you know, different apartment locations, so that the, the young people know that there is a business that cares about them, and that they could make some extra money. That's, I think, really important for a lot of the, the people that live in Tacoma Park. And I don't know if you can answer this, or the traffic expert, but you guys have the Taco Bell down the street, University of New Hampshire. Do you know if there is any difference in traffic counts that you anticipate from that location and this new location?
I don't have any traffic counts from that location. That was, I did do some work on that property through the state condemnation process. So I did, I was there, I made some observations. But it was internal to the parking lot, and it was difficult to get separate counts just for that.
Okay.
I don't recall what the square footage of that one was. I mean, I would guess it would probably be similar.
Similar, okay, that's fine. You know, residents always complain about the traffic, so I just want to make sure that, you know, there's not going to be a huge volume. And I don't anticipate one. But it'd be good to make sure that you guys tell us what you think, if there is any comparison. And finally, is this the latest design for a Taco Bell? You know, a lot of times the franchisors come up with these new building designs. Is this the latest one? And the cantina concept, I don't know if you're familiar with that, for Taco Bell, is that something that you're going to roll out here, where it's more kind of like a full-service, quick-serve restaurant, rather than a fast-food restaurant that might sell beer and wine? Is that something that you guys are looking at, or?
I guess I can answer generally, and Will Lewis may have something else to add. But in terms of, I guess, kind of the design itself of the building and the interior, kind of the general concept in terms of the interior of the store, that is something that Taco Bell is beginning to roll out. This is actually going to be the first one in this area that has this new concept and kind of the new idea of really wanting people to come and stay. In terms of the, the service itself, it is a typical Taco Bell, in terms of the restaurant and menu, et cetera. The, the one thing that we've been hearing as we've been going out is, again, the emphasis of this fresco menu. And that is something that's going to be emphasized here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
To further that along, as far as you were asking, this is the most recent. This is one of the two. is one of the two most recent prototypes, well, not prototype, but.
The store. Alongside of this, there's also what's called the Explorer Building.
Okay.
So it's a slightly different image, but to the point, it's, this is the, what most neighborhoods prefer, the neutral colors, something that's not too flashy, kind of blends with the neighborhood, looks good, looks professional, and catches the eye, but doesn't scream at you.
Great, okay, thank you.
Councilmember, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Thank you for coming out tonight. I live essentially right across the street from where the Wendy's and the Dunkin' Donuts are, further south on the New Hampshire corridor, which is not in the city, but it doesn't change the convenience of the location. And I think the Wendy's is approximately the same distance away from the road that you all would propose, the Taco Bell, the Dunkin' Donuts, and then the two McDonald's up and down the corridor are further, further back. But of course, the Wendy's is not vegetated in any way, it's a giant paved surface right up to the building. So I appreciate the design elements that you've put in here, to your comment about the materials for the wall, I think the chimney facade material seems like using the same material would make sense, but that's not really my call. I guess the broader concern I have, I guess, with the overall project is just the sense that what I think we were trying to drive toward was mixed use overall for the corridor. And there's been a dialogue, at least in the parts of the city, where I've talked to people about this, of, you know, what's the first project, and sort of a chicken and egg issue around redevelopment and whether and when the Purple Line projects stimulates housing, opportunity for housing really along the corridor, or new housing, I should say, because there's some in different parts of the county, the city, and PG County. But, you know, that's my sort of overall concern here, is that seeing the size of the property that you purchased, and just thinking about the opportunity for mixed use and wanting to drive that, wanting to see, you know, housing, presumably some affordable housing, retail or other uses on the first story, I think that's the way that I've certainly been envisioning what's going to happen on that corridor. And I just worry that this is, this is a nice version of the same kind of content and vehicle-driven access that we already have. So that's sort of my overall concern with the project, which I don't think it's the fault of the Taco Bell project that that's, that that's not what your project is about. But that's sort of my one overriding concern. So I don't know if I have any questions per se, but you're welcome to comment on that issue. I'll just stop there, thank you.
The only thing I was going to point out, and I understand that, is that what we're talking about in terms of this redevelopment is a very small subdivided lot, it's less than a half an acre in size, and as Carter Davis had mentioned, the remainder of the parking lot is controlled by Aldi. So on this specific lot, we've limited opportunity in terms of what can be developed there. The part that seems very important, though, is would this preclude kind of the future redevelopment of that shopping center? And I think, as you heard from Carter, is that it won't, it actually, I mean, why don't you talk to yours?
Sure. Yeah, I think, you know, right now, and I focus on retail, so I'm the retail asset manager for our retail properties, so I can speak hopefully all day long on retail. I don't wear the residential hat at JBG, so sort of the mixed use, and the residential is clearly, obviously, what would drive a mixed-use project here. I can tell you that, you know, as I said, we didn't really have any discussions about, you know, is this a great mixed-use property? Well, it is a good mixed-use property, but at some point in the future. We didn't have any discussions about, should we tear it down and look for residential? To me, that means, I think, the market isn't there right now. You know, what is being demanded pretty clearly is a very nice Taco Bell. You know, it is still very largely retail-driven at this property. I think this doesn't preclude any, in my mind, doesn't preclude any future redevelopment, as I said earlier. So, you know, I view this as a short-term step forward and improvement in the overall property, it brings some national investments, it may not meet the, I mean, I think sector plans, you know, that's what you sort of want to see eventually, obviously, that's the long-term goal, and maybe a lot of people's short-term goals also, but having, you know, lived through a few redevelopments, it can oftentimes take a long time to get there. And, you know, again, I view this as an incremental step to getting us closer, and I don't, you know, given some of the dynamics there, especially the control that Aldi has, particularly over that surface parking lot, I don't view this as being a roadblock to future potential redevelopment. So that's kind of my quick thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, thank you for coming this evening. I just had a couple of questions. You mentioned what time the store would open, what time is it closing?
The store itself closes at midnight, and then the drive-through is open till?
One, two o'clock, that's up to debate, consideration.
Okay, great. And I appreciate the job fairs and providing jobs, can you tell me what the wages are at Taco Bell's?
Sure, I think that's, right now, the typical, in Prince George County, the team member typically pays, gets paid about $10 an hour, shift managers at $1,250, the assistant general manager is about $35,000 a year, depending upon background, and $45,000 for the manager.
And what about employees under the age of 18? They get $10 of their team and?
They would start at 10 as well.
Okay, great. And I appreciate you talking about looking into some environmental aspects, but I think as Councilmember Mail said, you know, we're looking for this to be one of the first developments there and to really set the standards, so I think it would be nice to hear, just like you're doing with the jobs and potentially having an MOU with Man Up, that you're doing more than maybe looking into things. And, you know, just doing some, you know, looking at other developments recently, I just, I was shocked this weekend to see how much is really being done. I mean, we have in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, a LEED-certified subway shop, in Oak Park, Illinois, McDonald's now has a green roof. You know, a lot of these, you know, what do you call it, not fast food, quick service restaurants are doing some very unique things. I know in Tacoma Park, there are a lot of residents who would like to see more parking that has access to electrical vehicle plug-ins. So I would just, you know, since this is our first, what may come here, standard for setting what comes in the future, I just ask that there be a commitment more than looking into these things. Thank you.
If I may, I guess, offer two responses, and we can look into some others, is we have looked actually at kind of different options in terms of the roof, and because it's such a small store, green roof is not, is not really, you can't do it here because you have mechanical equipment. Actually, that's one thing that the sector plan recommends, is moving your mechanical equipment above, and actually, as you saw from the elevation, we've actually designed this to kind of look as though it's a story and a half with our parapet that we have, just to obscure that. But as a result of that, you need room for maintenance, and there's not room to do a green roof. I mentioned the cool roof, and if I may, that's something that Moy would be, would be willing to do, and we would commit to it, and we can actually add that as a note on our plan, that we would do that. And the same thing, you know, with regards to the LED lighting and some other things, and we're happy to look at some of the others as well.
Councilmember Primes.
Thank you. My thanks also for coming out this evening and for the work that you all have described in modifying the design in response to the comments you've gotten from various parties over the month. I have, for the moment, just some very quick questions. Mr. Lewis, yes, I have that right, yes. You were mentioning about salary, or I should say, pay rates in response to Councilmember Stewart's question, you said $10, is that a starting salary, a minimum that is given, or is that a typical, I think is the word used?
That is, that is the typical starting salary for a new shift worker.
So that's over the current $8.40 Montgomery County minimum wage you're describing?
Yes.
And it's actually, it's actually over the, what the proposed increases that Montgomery County is mandated.
Yes, which is 10, oh, no, it's 9.50.
I think it's 9.55, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm curious also about the mix of part and full-time employment, can you say anything about that for a typical store?
As far as how many individuals are part-timers?
Yeah, I'm asking specifically because you mentioned in passing college benefits and things like that, and do those accrue to all employees or only full-time ones?
That's all employees, that's.
Including part-timers?
Including part-time, and typically you have employees that work there, don't typically work full-time, completely available, that's definitely an option. Now, as far as the benefits that goes towards college, scholarship, grants, so forth and so on, that's based upon application. So if you're, if those who show initiative, they value their education, they would apply for that grant, that scholarship, same as you would for any other grant and scholarship, and those are who are most deserving, most fitting, do get those.
All right, and my last question is just about the way that the parties here interact. Moy is a very large franchisee for Yum! Brands, not just Taco Bell, I assume then that the two entities work together very well. When there are design decisions made, are they, what degree do they come from Taco Bell Corporate, in other words, from Yum! Brands, and what degree do they come from Moy with the understanding of what Taco Bell allows? And then, then another question, for JGBR, within the rectangle that is being leased by Moy, do you have any say about what goes on there, or do you just kind of let them do what they see fit within the rectangle?
As far as the, what's allowed, the franchisees, franchisees, all franchisees must abide by a typical franchisee agreement. That franchisee agreement does bind the franchisees to, to essentially work within the confines of what's allowed.
Can I, what I'm really asking is, when there are decisions about design elements, the drive-through, the notable one on the table here, are those decisions made by Moy alone, or are they made both by Yum! Brands and Moy?
We work with, we would work with, we do work with an architect that is a voice of Taco Bell Corporate, so she's in tune with what's required.
So that person is paid by Taco Bell Corporate or paid by Moy?
That person will be paid by Moy, but works hand-in-hand with Taco Bell Corporate to manage the standard.
I'm sorry, being a little tangential.
No, it's okay.
So what you're describing is that Moy makes the design decisions within the envelope of what Taco Bell Corporate, Yum! Brands allows?
Yes, typically, the design decisions tend to go towards what's either required or what's allowed within development, wherever they're looking to build.
Thanks, I think that clarifies what I was trying to get clarified, thank you.
Happy to jump in, just on the JBG, JGBR question. Within the lease, there are approval rights from the landlord, and I got to tell you, I haven't read in detail, because I don't have felt the need to test, you know, what we see, we like, you know, we, they've updated us as we've gone along in the process, and obviously, we've only been engaged for three months. So, you know, we, as a landlord, have to sign off for their permits, for instance, and so forth. I couldn't tell you if they ever tried to test us, what rights we might have right now, I'd have to go back and look, but we're certainly, you know, very happy with what we've seen, but, you know, the landlord does have a little bit of control in a sense.
Well, implicitly or explicitly, you have signed off your company that is on the site plan that's before us?
Yes.
The only thing I was going to add is just in terms of the Taco Bell and the drive-through, that they're really, it's strictly linked in the situation, Moy would not build this restaurant without the drive-through at this location.
Well, that's a statement for someone who wants to minimize opposition, which is something you're not going to react to, but in any case, many things can be negotiated depending on how they're approached.
And I guess just in terms of expectations, though, they've looked at this, we've obviously heard that comment before, but from a perspective of looking at the site, it's.
It doesn't meet, it doesn't meet the financial.
The statement that there is no Plan B is often a very good negotiating tactic.
As far as no drive-through as being the Plan B.
Whatever the Plan B, whatever the alteration is, that's just an observation from my part.
Typically, alterations are up to negotiation. Obviously, some are not, and drive-through for a business that, in general, gets a lot of revenue from a drive-through is typically not one of the ones. Typically, negotiations are based upon where you put your drive-through, how you situate the corner, how you improve the look of the store from one vantage point versus another.
And I do, as I said earlier, I do appreciate myself, and I'm sure my colleagues agree, the modifications that have been made to the design along the lines of what you're describing here.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and I promise I'm not going to take too long. I just had a couple of quick questions. One is, you know, see the design you have on the screen here before us, is this a concept design, or is this really kind of what we would see on that corner?
This is actually, as part of our application, we've submitted elevations that you're seeing, and that this is basically depicting what's shown on the engineer drawing, so this is what's going to be out there, and this is what, we're going to submit these as part of our application, and our, we'll have a condition that basically says we need to be, you know, in conformance with these.
Okay, and oftentimes, on these renderings that we get, you can't quite see the sign, is there any signage plans that we're not seeing on this rendering?
From this view, the only thing you're not seeing is there's a Taco Bell, similar to the Taco Bell channel letters that you see on there now, on the drive-through side.
Okay, but there's no freestanding sign, 80 feet up in the air?
No.
Kind of looks like a billboard.
Yeah.
All right. You know, I really appreciate the responsiveness that the whole group of you have had with the community and some of the concerns. I know there's some that are still concerned about traffic and some concerns about the drive-through as it relates to traffic. I appreciate the attention you paid to some of the pedestrian concerns. I think you really demonstrated a willingness to work with the community in addressing things. I look at the property, and Ms. Silver, you commented on the size of this property and the corner of this parking lot, I don't see a mixed use being there, but I do see this being part of a mixed-use community. And I really think with, especially with the Purple Line coming in, we're going to see much more residential in the area, I think we're going to see much more mixed-use buildings, but I don't see that potential on this particular corner at this time, I don't see how it would happen. And my bottom line is, are kind of two things, one is the jobs. I think, you know, I have many people in my ward who are members of Man Up and certainly are constantly looking for jobs within the educational requirements and the, and pay range that they're qualified for, and so that's a key aspect. The other thing is affordable food. You know, I represent a vast number of constituents who are on very limited income, and they're looking for affordable food. I'm familiar with Taco Bell, I was surprised to hear some of the menu items that you talked about tonight with the vegetarian selections and vegan selections. I think, you know, those two things alone make me a supporter of this project, but it doesn't mean that we don't need to maybe negotiate on some of the other things. I understand what you're saying, though, about a drive-through being an integral part of the business. And so at this point, I think you're really headed in the right direction, and I would be supportive of this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz, you have one additional point?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Yesterday, when I was attending, or Saturday, I guess it was, the Man Up block party, I had the chance to talk to the gentleman that was staffing the table that Taco Bell had set up, gentleman. set up, gentleman by the name of Akeem, who identified himself as the district manager. So we talked for, for quite a bit, and one of the things that I, I told him I thought was very important to the community would be that the community have a sense that they can have a connection, if you will, to the management of this store, such that if it's not being operated the way we want it and you want it to be operated, that we can feel like there's a guy there, either if not the store manager, the district manager, who we can talk to and get some results, and that we're just not going to be saying, oh, well, Moy is just this big entity, and, and, you know, we don't know where the, the doorbell is in order to get them to, to come, come to our door. And he impressed me by his reply that he's the kind of a guy who felt very strongly the same way I did, that this is what he wanted to do. I was kind of hoping he might be here tonight to be able to say that, but I think that would be a very important element from, from the constituents that, that have been expressing concerns. So that way, I mean, it's, it's a new business, there's always glitches, things don't go right, and things can happen around Taco Bell location that have absolutely nothing to do with your store, just because of the environment and the, the neighborhood, that, that we may need your help in kind of trying to figure out the best way to address, and being able to have that dialogue with the store would be valuable. I hope we can go for, have that.
Councilmember, Councilmember Man, you have one additional?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, Eric, can if you'd come up and just speak to the issue of what you see in, not this property per se, but mixed-use development or redevelopment potential for that corner in general, and any sense of timing on those issues? I think it's just helpful, given what we're, the general subject that we're talking about, to have you opine on anything that you're aware of with regard to planning and plan implementation and trajectories for the area.
Well, I, I think as Mr. Davis mentioned, being the owner of the property, you know, they, the property owners have a sense of what they wanna do with their properties and how those fit within the plans, so beyond what was discussed tonight, I, I'm, I'm not aware of any other projects that are under development in that part of the city, if that's what you're asking.
I was asking, as a planner, right, who's thinking about future use, the county's plans to add 38,000 new residents, something like that, Bus Rapid Transit Corridor, county plans, Bus Rapid Transit are interested in a, you know, thoroughfare with pedestrian opportunities, side lanes, et cetera. We're trying to make that happen, right? That's why we put it in a piece of paper and other pieces of paper and...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the sector plan lays out the 20- to 30-year vision for that part of the city, and I think one of the things that was mentioned tonight was means of getting there, and we haven't had really any major development or even redevelopment at that corner in a long time. Actually, the Aldi expanded their store about three years ago on that location, clearly with an intent to stay in that configuration for a while, and the Easy Storage Building just further down Holton Lane was the only other real major project that had happened there.
And the Walgreens as well, right?
And the Walgreens is correct, more recently. And I think one thing from an economic development perspective, much so than maybe a planning perspective, that the Taco Bell development offers is a more optimistic look at what can happen there in the short, medium, and long term in terms of attracting other kinds of tenants or opportunities, because we have, like I said, we haven't seen a lot of change, especially on that one property in a while.
Thank you.
If I might, I think there's a couple of things. The first is that, obviously, we lobby, we want certain kinds of developments that fit into the sector plan ultimate goals. We don't own the properties, so there's always the issue of private ownership and what they wanna do, and what we can encourage, and what new owners we can encourage to the area. Certainly, we did a good job about making sure that the sector plans were in our interest and were in place so that as money has started to become a little more available and interested in development, it started to come a little more development, available, that those are there. One of the things we'll be talking about in a little bit are some of our legislative items, and part of that is other kind of infrastructure improvements or economic development incentives that can, can help advance some of our ultimate goals. So I just, you know, there's a, there's a tug-in, the carrots and sticks are the various things that, that we have. This is a very small site. The question is, you know, is it an, an important step just to help the owners and, and, as you say, attract some other businesses, you know, or does it say, we're not that interested in this area, and we're just, you know, I, I think it's gonna be an interesting discussion for us all about how we move forward, but our bigger push is on a, on a bigger look, not just on a little property. So how do we, how do we attract people? How do we attract those, that mixed-use development?
So the new, the new laundromat or the plan we reviewed about a month or two months ago, that building, and then the Cassini Shoe rebuilds, you know, both of those, I think, if I'm remembering the laundromat correctly, retain enough space between the street and the building to, in theory, allow that idea of an off, off, an off-traffic lane, thoroughfare parking area. This project wouldn't do that, so I'm assuming you'd have to, you couldn't build on that, so you couldn't have that, that, that planning component on this, along this stretch of the road.
This building is being set back far enough to allow for the right-of-way dedication.
So it doesn't just have, it looks like it has just two car widths of, of space between it and the sidewalk?
I think it's 25 or 30 feet.
Yeah, it's set back 27 feet.
And that's, that's, they also take into, take into account where the center line of the road is, and sometimes it's not always evident, or it might not actually be what the center of what we perceive the road to be.
Could you just, as follow-up, sort of draw that out or spec that out for us, so thinking about the, the county's requirements or goals for the width of the sidewalk, 12 to 15 feet in a mixed-use development area, the, the expected width in our sector plan for the, the lane, whatever spacing is needed between the lane and the, and the, the major component of the road, and just sort of show what that looks like?
Yeah, we can do that on the 12th, I think.
Okay, I do.
Well, the discussion is the 5th.
No, the discussion is the 12th.
No, it's the 12th and then the 19th. We had to change that.
So thank you all very much, and we will come back to this with a discussion on the October 12th.
Thank you very much.
And we'll take a short break before we do our remaining three items on the agenda this evening. I'll just remind my colleagues that we are gonna continue our closed session at 8:30 tomorrow morning, and we're, we're now a good hour behind. We went over on that last one by 45 minutes, so if we can do what we need to do, but do it in a little shorter timeframe, that'll get us out of here in a decent time to be able to go back at it first thing in the morning. So we will take up the discussion of the bus shelter contract with Signal Outdoor Advertising, and again, turn to Mr. Haasberg.
Good evening. My name's Eric Haasberg, City Planner in Housing Community Development Department. So tonight, discussing the renewal of the agreement with Signal Outdoor Advertising, which is a group that the city's partnered with now for several years to provide bus shelters at many of the bus stops in the city, and there's advertising on these bus shelters. And just to give a bit of background on the, on the process, city staff initiated conversations with Signal Outdoor back in 2014, early part of the year, just investigating options to renew our contract for the bus shelters, which, which is expiring, and looking at other options as well in the region, looking at what some of our neighboring jurisdictions have been doing and partnerships they have with, with other companies. As it happens, Signal Outdoor has several contracts, especially with some of the smaller jurisdictions in Prince George's County and Montgomery County as well, and Gaithersburg. And it was decided in June of last year to pursue renewal of our existing contract with Signal. They've been a good partner and could potentially be an even better partner moving forward. So the agreement, which is part of the discussion item tonight, I just wanted to sort of highlight a few of the, the key components of it.
And are you gonna be highlighting any potential differences in the, between the old contract and the new, 'cause I didn't see much of a comparison there?
Right. Well, I would say that the primary differences really have to do with the maintenance component. A lot of the discussions and, and the discussions with Signal had been, it was the Housing Community Development Department, the Public Works Department, and the city attorney have been sort of working on this agreement with Signal for several months, and the maintenance component was the largest, was the largest piece of that, really setting some, some standards as far as how the maintenance should work in the winter, as far as snow shoveling, or even what kind of de-icing material to use, as well as removal of handbills and, and graffiti, and fixing broken, broken pieces and things like that. And so the maintenance portion, which is Section 11 of the contract, is fairly extensive. There was a lot of back and forth on that. So a lot of those pieces are, are new to this contract. Some of the other elements that are new to the contract include the provision for new shelters in the city. Right now, there are 23 bus shelters at 22 locations. University Boulevard at one location has two shelters just because of the, the number of bus patrons that use that one location.
And might that change with the opening of the Transit Center?
That particular spot will be consolidated in, in the Transit Center, as several other small bus stops around the area will be consolidated into the Transit Center when it opens. But specifically, we worked out a provision for 10, up to 10 new shelters, primarily on New Hampshire Avenue, on East West Highway at New Hampshire Avenue, and also potentially for Flower Avenue as the design of the Flower Avenue, Green Street progresses. We were working with the Public Works Department and right on to identify the stops on Flower Avenue that had the highest ridership, and looking at the design of those intersections to see if they could accommodate the shelter. One of the challenges on Flower Avenue is just the, the limited space for the sidewalk, and the shelter needs to be sitting behind the sidewalk to allow for ADA compliance when the bus pulls up. So that's something that's still sort of TBD, and it's identified in the contract that up to five shelters could be on Flower Avenue if they fit. On, on that note, one of the other things we added in the contract was provision for non-advertising shelters, so basically shelters that aren't through the agreement with Signal, and that could come in two varieties. One, we could pay Signal, and they have a set price to put shelters that don't have any kind of advertising in the city, and they would also be part of that maintenance agreement. Or we could provide our own shelter, a custom design, maybe an artistic shelter, in a, in a situation where either the space doesn't provide, or there were some other interests in, or, and funding to provide a, a different kind of bus shelter, unlike the more standard one that we have with the advertising on it. So the agreement, on the one hand, provides a lot of specification on how the maintenance is going to operate and how the, what kinds of new shelters we might get and where they will be, but it also gives the city flexibility to continue to do its own thing, sometimes where we find that we need that flexibility. So those are some, some of, I think, the highlights of the, the contract that I wanted to point out that are new, that are new to this contract.
Just a follow-up. Part of the reason for having the non-advertising ones are that we could have some of the shelters in the historic district, which we've been precluded from having under a, a previous contract.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Yeah, just, did you have?
I mean, I think in the efforts of sort of keeping things moving along, I had highlighted some areas that were different and, and sort of new to this contract, and those were, those were basically the, the key points, so there's some questions.
I think, I think that helps a lot. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Eric, all I can say is I am delighted to see this. My constituents have been asking for bus shelters on Flower Avenue since the Flower Avenue, Green Street project became real. Thank you for pursuing this. Thank you for making this happen. If I need to send flowers, I will.
Wait, wait till we find the locations.
Yeah, we gotta fit them in first.
We, we want them there, too.
I mean, if we just get a couple, you know, at least I can say I have some bus shelters on Flower Avenue, right? But thank you very much. I don't have any questions. I know we're just, you know, putting this together. The agreement, from what I've read, looks fine. I, I especially like the fact that they're gonna do the snow removal, 'cause I actually ride the bus, and during the winter, that's a big problem. I wish S, S H A would do, you know, snow removal of bus stops on Carroll Avenue. But thank you once again, and I appreciate all the hard work on this.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I just have two questions. One is, we talk about, I think it's on page, top page three, no tobacco advertisements, and I was wondering if the city ever considered expanding that to no gambling or no advertisements for alcohol? That's one question. And the other question is, I just looked up what other cities get in terms of the profit share, and it varies widely around the country, from like 10% to what we have here, to like up to 63% in other cities, and it, there's probably a lot of variables that go into that, but I was just curious if you could tell us a little bit more about that.
About how we stack up versus other?
Yeah, and what, you know, you know, you said that, you know, Montgomery County uses the same company and other things. The 10% seem to be the same as when we negotiated the last time, and I was just curious.
I can't speak too much to some of the other jurisdictions. Most of our research was contained to just sort of our immediate area. The 10% was some, Prince George's County actually has a contract with Signal as well. Believe that theirs is also 10%, as well as Gaithersburg, so it's fairly standard for our area. Montgomery County has a much larger contract. They have, I think, 400 shelters in the county. Theirs is with Clear Channel right now. They're in the process of doing an RFP for their 2019 fiscal year to, to look at a different, potentially a different vendor. I don't know if they were necessarily happy with the contract that they had. The biggest piece, really, from our perspective, is the maintenance, because, I mean, there was a shelter that was obliterated on Piney Branch a couple weeks ago, and just getting it replaced, getting it fixed, getting the glass cleaned. Right now, the, the glass is being replaced with like a metal mesh, just because it doesn't, it still has that transparency, but it doesn't shatter, and I think maybe young people are less inclined to, to shatter it. And so the maintenance was really the biggest piece we were looking at, more so than the revenue portion. As far as the advertising, we can look into your, your question, but I think the city also has an opportunity to, to ask that certain ads be removed if they're offensive in some way.
And we have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
How often does the advertising change?
That depends on the location of the shelter. Though shelters on New Hampshire and University Boulevard are definitely the, the higher revenue generators for the program, and, I mean, it, it also depends on the contract that the company might have with, with Signal. We don't really get involved in, in that portion so much. We, we get a check every few months and call in maintenance complaints.
I just had a whimsical idea, and I underline whimsical, because it would be nice if the community could sometimes put an ad up there when they... community could sometimes put an ad up there when they got something scheduled in, in a particular neighborhood.
One, one component of the contract that we have gives the city the ability to, we have essentially a set rate of advertising ourselves in there on, on the shelters, and that extends actually into Prince George's County as well, in case there's like an event or something that might be more of a regional draw. But we also have formalized what, what was, I think, maybe an informal agreement with Signal in the past, where if there are shelters in areas that don't, they leave the ads in the shelter even the next month if they haven't paid, because why would they go out and take them out? And so, if there are, Metro does the same thing. If there are shelters where a new client hasn't come to replace the ads, the city might have the opportunity to put our own sort of PSA in there free of charge.
That'd be cool.
Yeah, and that's something we, we've worked with them on in the past in doing, and, and it's more formal in this contract moving forward.
Yeah, the other question I have is that, it's the bus riders who report on the problems at the bus shelters. I'm not a bus rider, but I get lots of feedback from presidents who say that such is such a bus shelter. Something's wrong. And is, is, does the contract stipulate how complaints get referred to Signal so that they, so that, because right now, it's sort of like dealing with EPC or something.
Yeah, the, one of the things is, is having more clear information in the shelter itself, on how to, how to report complaints. All the shelters have ID numbers on them to help, to facilitate that communication, but that's definitely something that we can work with them on, expanding or enhancing. I must say that the Signal has, has gone through a management change in the last year, since we first started working with them, and, and the new team is much more responsive than some of the folks we were working with before, but...
The old team, whoever they were, they just, I mean, there were situations that just didn't get fixed.
Yeah, and, and sometimes I think it's a communication challenge. Sometimes we'll get a, a note from Ride On, because folks have complained to Ride On. So it's just channeling, I think, is your point, channeling those to the right, to the maintenance tech, actually, who will be scheduling his crew out there.
It would be great if we can get that, that phone number or something, so that everybody in the community knows the phone number, or at least the people that ride buses, and, and there's an awful lot of them. So that, that way, they don't have to go through me, not to go through the...
Public Works or whoever.
Public Works or, you know, the, our website, they can just deal with it directly. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've probably answered most of my questions up to this point. I was concerned about the types of advertising I see sometimes in the bus shelters, but I think you could address that with the fact that we have some flexibility in asking them to change advertisements, kind of inappropriate photos is usually the issue. The other thing is maintenance. I'm glad to see this worked out like that, but I did see in here that they have like six months to fix the lighting in the bus, existing bus shelters, but there's not any stipulation in the ongoing maintenance as far as the duration for getting lighting repaired. And based on their track record, I would say that we ought to have something in there to have a time limit on, on the fixing of, of things such as the lighting.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Councilmember May.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm enthusiastic about this project, and thank you for your work on it. The one follow-up to Councilmember Stewart's comment is, you know, vaping and, and, you know, non-tobacco products that I would add to the list.
Medical cannabis.
Sure.
As far as the advertising itself?
Yeah, as far as, as, with regard to limits on the kinds of advertising. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Just one question. You know, in D.C., some of the bus shelters will actually tell you when the next bus is arriving. Will this contract allow us to get those type of shelters?
The, the sort of real-time displays, I don't think this would preclude that from happening. The biggest challenge is just, is it powered and vandalism?
Okay.
There was a grant, I had to look into it, but I know State Highway was working on getting a, a few dozen of those across, I think, Montgomery and Prince George's County, and there was, coincidentally, I think it was the stop that's scheduled to be consolidated into the Transit Center that was supposed to maybe pilot one of those around here.
Right.
I have to look into the status of that. It's been a while.
Well, I, I would like to put a request in for Flower Avenue if it's possible. Thank you.
Acknowledged.
Okay, it sounds like people are in general agreement on this draft agreement. We come back to it when?
Next.
Okay. So is there anything that we haven't covered that people think is something additional? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is discussion of state legislation, including bond bills, and we're joined by our legislative advocate.
Good evening.
Hello.
Michelle Douglas, Public Policy Partner. Mr. Douglas, welcome.
Thank you. It's good to see everyone. It's been a little too long, and I don't often say that, but I do miss seeing each of you. And before I start, I actually just want to take a point of personal time just to thank Bruce Williams, the mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, for all that we have done together, for all of your efforts in Annapolis and working together over the past many years. It's really been a pleasure, and I really hope that we continue, in some vein, working together in Annapolis.
I look forward to finding some opportunities to do just that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I wanted to start tonight with just doing a quick, I know that your time is, is a little tight tonight, so I'm going to do a, a quick overview of some of the major issues that we worked together on during this past legislative session, and then talk a little bit about bond bills, and see what questions you have for me, and guidance for the upcoming session. So just a brief overview of what went on in the past session in 2015. We had over 60 new members out of the 188-member legislature, which is over a third new members, which is a tremendous turnover, particularly in Maryland. We had, as you know, a brand-new governor who was, who came into office, sworn in a week after the legislature began this January, and just two days before he had to introduce his budget. So it was, it was interesting time. In the House, we had a tremendous turnover in committee chairmanships, subcommittee chairmanships, and overall Democratic Party leadership roles within the House of Delegates. Not as much change in the Senate. Many of the new senators who were elected came from the House, so they at least had some background in many of the issues that were recurrent from previous years, but the House committees themselves were vastly changed from previous years. And those of you who came down during different points of the session saw just a tremendous change in the House. So that offered us a lot of opportunities to begin educating some new members, talking to new folks about what our priorities are on behalf of the city, and bringing people up to speed on issues like highways, highway user revenue, and they need, need to restore that funding. Not surprisingly, again, Maryland's facing a structural deficit. You know, unfortunately, every year, that seems to crop up, no matter how many times we work on cutting it down. But I will say that, you know, it has consistently been over $1 billion for the past probably six, seven, eight years. This year, it was $870 million. So while it is said to be critically large by some, for some of us who've been down there for a long time, it doesn't seem like the impossible hurdle. But we also have a newly-elected governor who ran on a platform of cutting government spending, reducing taxes, reducing business burden with regulations, and returning money to the people's pockets. So the combination of a governor with an express intent to reduce government spending, decrease taxes, along with a structural deficit, combined together to play an interesting budget role this year. I thought I, what I would do is just review a couple of the key bills, very large view. Of course, the, the first one would be the city's alcohol bill, which resoundingly passed very easily this year, I'm happy to say, unanimously. And we actually even took time working with Committee Counsel, delegation, staff, and the Department of Legislative Services to craft an amendment to the bill with the help of Suzie, and Jesse, and Bruce, and the members of this council, so that while this section of the code on a statewide level is under review, we were able to add a technical amendment to the city's alcohol bill, so that as the code is revised through this technical cleanup, we won't have to come back in the next year and make any changes. That will actually just flow into what the new code revisions will be. It's a very technical issue, but it's something that allows us to not have to go back and do another fix this year or next, once the code revision is complete. So I want to thank everyone for working with us on that. That was unexpected, and yet worked out fantastically. Another issue that I wanted to highlight is that of the police body cameras. And the reason I want to highlight this is for a couple of points. The first is, I know you're used to me saying, you know, "It's not over until Sinai die." And when, until the clock holds 12 o'clock on Sinai Die, an issue is not dead. So this is an instance where bills were introduced, two different bills, each cross-fired within both chambers, were introduced around the body camera issue, resulting from the, the incident that occurred in Ferguson, Missouri. And it was a topic of very strong concern by many people. There was a lot of heated debate, sides that did not, could not reach an agreement on the bill. A lot of issues raised, and after some serious hearing debate, and then committee discussion, bill was voted down. And so, the issue was considered essentially dead for the session, until three weeks before the end of session, when there was another shooting that brought more national attention to the issue around police body cameras, and the issue was revived. So that meant that we needed to bring everybody back to the table and figure out where is there a compromise. And working again with the city, and making sure that the Police Chiefs Association, and Acasa de Maryland, and others were included on a commission, there was the ability to hammer out an agreement on the issue of police body cameras, putting together a commission to review policies and protocols, and make suggestion to the state police training unit, and that has occurred. So, again, it's just that cautionary tale of, I, I know people sometimes feel like, oh, you stop worrying about that. Well, we, we can't, until midnight, some Sinai Die. So it's, it's just an interesting point for us to always remember. And finally, one of the most debated issues that we've talked about here for many, many years, and really came alive this year again, was the stormwater. As you know, Governor Hogan pledged to repeal the storm, state's mandatory stormwater program, and he introduced priority legislation in both chambers to do just that. There was a hearing held fairly quickly within the House Environment and Transportation Committee, where there was, you know, obviously, serious debate and strong disagreement over what should be happening with the state's stormwater program. And very swiftly after the bill hearing, the committee voted on party lines to kill the bill, which meant that the Senate bill would not be revived, typically. President Miller then introduced his own legislation many weeks later, that was, he saw as the compromise bill, which would continue a state stormwater program, but change the fees from mandatory to enabling for the different jurisdictions, locals and municipalities. The key difference between that bill and what we saw in previous years around changing this, was that Montgomery County was exempt from changing in this bill. So Montgomery County's mandatory fees were not to be changed, and that, as you know, was an issue that we fought strongly a few years ago to ensure that the program did not turn backwards. So this bill then, for days and weeks, carried on, and again, with the very capable leadership of the council, the mayor, the city's manager, and, and Jesse, I will say, who I bugged about every five minutes, every day for many weeks, on this issue, when we had just emerging issues and amendments floating all over the place, really came together, and we were able to consistently get our message out about what we, what we could and couldn't live with in a bill, and why this was such an important bill. And as the bill was passed, Montgomery County's and all the municipalities with Montgomery County program remained intact. There are a few additional reporting requirements for the city and for those in Montgomery County, but there, the fees are not enabling as they are in other jurisdictions. So we're pleased about that outcome. And then lastly, I want to touch on the budget.
Just before you do that, can you say anything about the, the section of the bill that did finally make it through, that included Senator Young's language about the MOUs between jurisdictions and stormwater?
Yes, yes. Thank you. So one of the issues that we worked a lot on had to do with ensuring that counties had to work with municipalities on the issue of where there is an overlap in fees between a county and a municipality, and had to reach a memorandum of, have to, it's starting FY 2017, reach an MOU with the different municipalities, that you have reached an agreement on how the fees are going to be charged, and how they, basically the, the issue of tax duplication, which, you know, we've heard a lot from, it's a similar kind of analogous issue, where a municipal resident won't be charged, doubly charged by both the county and the municipality for the same stormwater fee. So...
And whether the county will pay the municipal fee for the property...
That's correct.
...that they own within the municipality.
Yes. So there were, there were some important fixes put in. I, I understand it'll be interesting to work it through, but, you know, the counties will not be able to disregard municipalities through this process, and it will, they will have to reach agreements with the different municipalities. So we really appreciate the technical assistance on how that works as we're, as we were moving that piece through.
And that deadline is coming up, December 31st of this year?
Yes, it is. It certainly is. It, and it will be, it needs to be part of the FY 17 budget, so those agreements have to be reached. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
No, okay, thank you. So as I said before, you know, Governor Hogan came in with a promise to cut spending, reduce taxes, and we also faced a state structural deficit. It was an interesting time. We saw a lot of collaboration initially on the budget between the General Assembly and the governor's office, the governor's Department of Budget Management. Unfortunately, in the last week of session, things turned rather rancorous between the governor's office and, and the General Assembly, and they ended on a rancorous note related to the budget. There were, the General Assembly had a list of what they believed were priorities areas that needed to be funded, totaling about $200 million, but as you know, Maryland's unique in that the... But as you know, Maryland's unique in that the governor introduces the budget and the legislature cannot add funds or move them around. They can simply cut funds. So what they did was wall off a set of $200 million funds for $200 million and basically put in budget language saying, "We've got $200 million sitting out here. Here are the priorities. We think that should be spent on. If you want to spend this money on these select programs, you are authorized to do so. If you don't do so by August 31st, those monies revert to the general fund." The governor chose to fund, over the summer, he chose to fund some of the health-related programs, did not choose to fund the geographic cost of education index, GCEI, about $68 million that I'm sure you've heard a lot about from the counties. And Montgomery County is one of the ones that's heavily impacted by that. So there's still some rancor as a result of the budget discussions last year. In addition, in the budget this year, there was an unspecified 2% across-the-board reduction in each state agency. So when the budget is passed, it included, excuse me, 2% cut across state agencies. And that list of state agency cuts was just released last week, I believe it was. And I forwarded that to Suzie and to Jesse. So they do have that. We've reviewed it, haven't seen anything of significant concern yet, but if something pops up, I'm looking forward to hearing about it. The other issue that, you know, we were glad was included in the budget was 19, not issue, the other amount of funding included in the budget we were very happy about was $19 million for municipalities for highway user revenue, a pledge that Governor Hogan made during the election and one that he kept in the budget. So we were pleased about that. We did need to work to ensure that that funding didn't get cut. And at one point, you know, there was an issue where Mako was trying to get some of those monies shifted from the municipalities to the counties because their share was not as large proportionally as what the municipalities was. And we again brought up the issue of the difference between municipalities and the local counties around highway user revenue and other funding sources. And so that was an opportunity to educate some of the new members on that very distinction, one that we've made for a number of years and finally last year really resonated with the General Assembly. Again, we have a lot of new members that we've been educating on this issue. But, you know, again, those are one-year funds, and we do not yet have a permanent fix to restore the Highway User Revenue Fund. And it's something that does need to be addressed. The governor has said that he acknowledges that there were a number of bills introduced this year in various forms to work towards either restoring partially or wholly or setting new calculations for how highway user revenues would be distributed to counties and municipalities, none of which, none of which passed this year. So I know that last year I recommended that, you know, we continue to work with MML and other municipalities to try to really put together a strategic plan for approaching Department of Budget and Management and the governor's office in order to really figure out a fix that we can push forward together and not just for the initial fix, but for long-term implementation. And I strongly recommend, again, that we continue working on that so that it's not a year after year after year, one-time funding issue for the city. And then since the end of session, I just wanted to note a couple of the things that have happened that will affect revenues for the upcoming year. Early in the summer, I think it was just before the Fourth of July, Governor Hogan reduced tolls at the different bridges, which then ultimately reduces highway user revenue, which, you know, impacts obviously the proceeds that can be distributed to different jurisdictions. And then last week, he announced, and I have sent to Suzie and Jesse, over $10 million worth of additional fee reductions. And those are going to be continuing for the next many years. So that's an additional hit to the state revenue, combined with still a portion, I think it's around $350 million, that we have a state structural deficit that will need to be closed in the upcoming year. So combine that with the 2% across-the-board reductions, which are structural in nature, so they will be ongoing for every year of this term. Those funds for those roles and projects and positions have been eliminated for the next three years.
You mean the 2% will last or that there'll be an additional 2% every year?
The 2% will last. And then late this afternoon, the governor issued a press release that essentially said, you know, "We've started to see some improvement in our economy, but, you know, we're going to need to continue tightening our belt." So I think we can infer more cuts. And we need to be able to return money to the voters' pockets. So, you know, I think message is pretty clear. I mean, it's what he ran on and it's what he has been talking about since. So I just think, you know, in thinking of the fiscal climate that we're going to be in for the next many years, we just need to keep that in mind. Now, the other side of the coin of that is that a lot of his focus is on economic development and job creation. And that is something that's obviously of high interest to the city and something that I think we want to look at ways to, you know, make the city's plans and efforts mesh with what the governor is looking to do and see how we can advance both goals at the same time. So that's a real brief overview of 90 days.
Can you talk a little bit about the bond bill process?
Sure. And I'm sorry, you know, I put together a handout tonight and I should have brought copies, or not a handout, I put together a small piece. And I will make sure that you get this. So in terms of the bond bills, let me give you a couple of notes about, you know, what a bond bill must contain and then what factors are highly helpful in considering a bond bill. So a bond bill must be a capital project, obviously can't be used for operating, and it has to have a demonstrated useful life of at least 15 years. Can't be used for religious purpose. You need to demonstrate that you've sought alternative funding for the project so that the state isn't your first place you're turning to. You need to also have matching funds ready. And typically, they're looking for at least 50% matching funds. And the project must be shovel-ready. So those are all pieces that you need to have set before looking, starting to look for a bond bill. And then, in addition, there are some factors that really weigh heavily in influencing whether or not a bond bill would be successful. And one of the primary ones is that, you know, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of bond bills requested every year, and there's a limited pot of money each year for bonds. And some years, it's a little more than others. It's not been particularly high lately. And usually, the requests are about tenfold more than the amount allotted. So, you know, it's just, just to give you a little bit of a gauge. One of the very important pieces is to make sure that the bond bill that you are seeking is a priority of the county delegation. In essence, what happens is there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of bond bill requests every year, and each delegation, each locale, each local has a say in what their top priorities are. So it's really important for us, at the point that we're ready to put in a bond bill, to be working with not only our District 20 folks, but the entire Montgomery County delegation to make sure that the bill is a priority for the county in weighing in on the project. And some of the other factors that help a bond bill in thinking of how they weight what's important is the public benefit derived from the project. So you need to demonstrate that. The evidence, evidence of construction readiness. It's interesting, there are often people who put in bills saying, "Well, we know this is in our year, but we're going to get it started." But when you can't demonstrate that you have the money in hand for matching funds or that you're not shovel-ready, it doesn't even get heard. So it's not like you're priming, you know, setting the table for a bill for another year. They close down and don't listen. And then local projects that serve a wide berth of the community are also something that seemed, that are deemed, yes.
I just wondered, that one requirement you said that needs the support of the whole county delegation, is that a requirement or just that enhances the application?
It enhances your application greatly. And so it's, it's not even that it gets the support of the delegation, but it's one of the top priorities of the delegation.
Is that new?
No.
Okay. I don't remember hearing that before, like we did for the community center.
Yeah, it's not unusual that a county delegation will be asked, "Give me your top two or three," out of all of those submitted within your jurisdiction. Tell me what your top two or three are.
In the past, and that was a long time ago, the, our leadership just happened to be county leadership, so we weren't able to get that.
But as recently as two years ago, the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church kitchen, based on submissions from Jamie Raskin and Sheila Hickson, who have a lot of sway, managed to get a cumulative $250,000. And I'm sure that the rest of the county delegation looked at them as leaders and said that there hadn't been money going into Tacoma Park, this end of the county projects in a while, and that all added into it.
Absolutely. So, and that's a great point. You know, those who ask over and over and over don't necessarily succeed over and over and over. Again, there's a limited pot of money and they want to spread it around. But it really does make a difference when you're a top priority of the entire delegation from the county.
Thank you.
And then there's a process, and I know that most are familiar with it, there's an entire packet that needs to be completed that demonstrates all of this before even drafting the bond bill. And something that we would do within, we'd need a bond bill from the Senate and the House that were cross-fired in order to make that happen. Also, just to, and I think Seth, you were at the bond bill hearing for the kitchen, right? The community kitchen?
I honestly don't remember.
Okay. So bond bill, there are, we call them...
I took parts in meetings with Sheila and anyway.
Okay. So there are, there are two days a year during the session that are bond bill hearing days, a Saturday and a Monday. And all of the hundreds of bond bills are heard on those two days. You have a max...
It's a zoo.
It's a zoo. You have a maximum of five minutes for the hearing for your bond bill. So again, that just demonstrates how much we need to put in upfront in making this all work. And then during, during the hearing, there's a lot that they want to know in that compressed five minutes.
I wasn't at the hearing, but anyway, yeah.
And a lot of that five minutes is speaking time for the sponsor.
Correct. Correct.
So if one of us were there, we might not get to say a word.
Not much. But you would want to be there.
Yes.
Yes. So that's just a quick how-to on a bond bill. And I know that the...
I was interested in it for the library project. I know that some of my colleagues are probably not ready for that. It sounds like the project isn't ready for it, according to the criteria that you laid out, shovel-ready.
You know, I think that the other thing is that in working with Michelle, we can talk with departments within the government, which can be useful in getting monies the other way. The other thing is that even though we may not go through the bond bill process to warm people up, we certainly can warm up the Montgomery delegation with the kinds of things that we want to have support for. So even if it's not for this coming year, the following year could be very important. We were also talking about doing an economic development tour with some folks in the same, in the same vein, to try to make sure that some of the exciting things that are going on can be shared with others. And I think we've got some work to do to flesh that out a little bit. But I think all of those things end up being really critical to put forward as a way to either get money out of Governor Hogan's staff, which I think we may have some options on, and, you know, try to piggyback it on Purple Line stuff and some of the other activities that are going on. So that's something that we'll be working together to figuring out the itinerary and what the exact goals and asks are of each of those components.
And the fun piece of that, in addition, is that we can also show how cohesive all of this planning is and all of the various, you know, what seems like a project here and a project there to an outsider for, for your District 20 delegation to see the big picture of everything that's happening and really talk about and think about where are places we can piggyback, where are places we might need assistance, and what else can you bring to the table?
Has Governor Hogan put any money into any economic development projects that you know, that you can tell us about?
Well, he just came in in January, so there, you know, the cabinet just came on board. I will tell you that over the summer, they're really working on those next layers of cabinet members. I'm sure that there is some money going, that will be going out of the door. But let me look into that and get you some more details. I, you know...
That'd be helpful.
Sure.
And I did take the opportunity, when I had it, in speaking with his Secretary of Business and Economic Development, that I guess is now going to be Commerce, to express that Tacoma Park was ready, willing, and able to bring forth projects and to have some economic development and have some assistance from the state, and we look forward to it. And he was open to that possibility.
Yes. I think it's a great intersection of the interests of both. Thank you.
So Councilmember Smith, did you have something else or is that an old one?
It's an old one, I'm sorry.
So are there things that the council wants to put forth as anything that we might be interested in that Ms. Douglas might be able to assist us in understanding, like, gee, the process for the bond bill, and gee, if that was an idea, maybe it's not ready for prime time this year, maybe next year? Are there other things that we want to consider?
I would like to hear your thoughts on tax duplication. I mean, I understand that when the delegates did try to put some legislation forward, but it failed. Do you think there's going to be another run at it? And what's the advice on trying to make it successful?
And to what extent? It would be a statewide bill versus a local bill?
Right. I will say that in this climate, I think it might be more successful if it were a local bill at this point, where jurisdictions said, "No, we actually want to pursue this." That might be a consideration for getting a foot in the door on the issue. There is, there has been, finally, this session, there was more discussion of the issue, which I will say hasn't really received, you know, in previous years, as much discussion as you would want or expect. But there was actually more discussion of the issue this year. So that's heartening.
But some of that discussion was disappointing in that it was expressions on the part of various legislators that they thought it should be local bills and that they were looking forward to doing that. I'm thinking of Delegate Walker in particular.
Yes.
Councilmember Mail.
Do you think we would have a shot at getting the governor's support if we sent the governor's a letter, the governor a letter explaining our position on being taxed twice for the same services, on the role of municipalities in Maryland versus counties?
I think sending that to the governor and also the Secretary of the Department of Budget and Management would be something that could always be helpful. I will say that Secretary Brinkley, Secretary of DBM, is masterful in his budgetary understanding and something that I think he would have a good grasp of as well as Governor Hogan.
Well, it certainly, I don't know if it takes a council vote or not, but I'd love to get your help to work with city staff to send that letter to the governor. And my, just to make it explicit, that I hope that letter would say, "We would like to see state legislation that would help us gain ground..." see state legislation that would help us gain ground in this, in this issue, and would like his, and his staff's support for that." And I don't know, again, if city staff need more, need a hand showing, or anything like that, let me know.
I think it would be unanimous.
Okay, good. The second issue I wanted to raise is with regard to freestanding emergency rooms. And if I understand correctly, the, a deadline is passed that was set under state legislation, or negotiated after state legislation was passed. Is there anything we can get, we can do in this out-of-session period to get, for example, our delegation to weigh in, in some way, to either send a letter to colleagues, and I'm more familiar with Congress, but a dear colleague letter explaining the state of play right now, where the, where the state is, the state agency is, in not doing what it was supposed to do, or whether there's some other approach that doesn't, at this moment, solve the problem, but sets us up maybe for the forthcoming session. I also welcome any ideas you have on the, on the actual legislative session, whether there's things we can be doing then.
There's also the commission, the task force.
Right. Yeah, I don't know that I have an immediate response right at this moment. You know, it's something I'd want to think on, just a little bit, what might be the best way to express that? We'd want to obviously get a better sense of where some folks are on the issue, before asking them to send something around. And I will also, I know that Susie and I talked about this last week, and you're, I'm sure, aware of the, the issue in Prince George's County with the hospital-
Laurel Regional.
Yeah, the hospital announcing its closure there, and the whole county reacting to, to the issue. And so, wanting to see a little bit, there's some quick play that's happening on that right now, in the, in the county council. So I'd want to, I'd want to watch that just for a minute, and see, you know, how that plays out, and if there's a way to weave this in also. Because there's certainly concern about the community losing that resource.
I'm, excuse me, I think it makes perfect sense to, to evaluate whether it's actually helpful or not, but I'm just thinking about taking advantage of what I assume is the, the near-universal similarity of opinion by legislators, that when they, they do something, and they vote, and they get through the process to get a majority to vote on something, and they get that done, and it doesn't happen, that that, regardless of, of party, they, they find that to be a problem. So, so if you look into the PG County part, and decide that we could do some helpful groundwork at this point, it just, you know, puts pressure to keep the process moving forward.
Absolutely.
If you could let us know in two weeks, or three weeks?
I believe that the Prince George's County is taking it up next week, is that right?
For that, I mean, the, the actual work about the emergency room stuff has progressed along quite a bit, within the, within the state staff. But the, kind of, the next step, kind of, comes out of the commission. The issue and the tweak to this is that, with the Prince George's County Laurel Regional Hospital change, it's moving more to a limited services hospital model. And so, there's, that's something that really wasn't envisioned, I mean, it's in the code, it's in the state law as a possibility, but it really hadn't been envisioned before, and it's kind of, now it's becoming a reality, at least for hospitals in this region. So, how, which, which version of that we tackle, I think, is important. But it seems like it's all moving towards the same place, which may be that we are able to get that category for Tacoma Park.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, if you could provide an update for us-
Sure.
Or you jointly could provide an update for us in two or three weeks, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
And then the-
Just on that point, though, the, my sense is that it's, the Prince George's Laurel question is, kind of, has moved quickly because of the way that it was put out there, but that there's a long process that they'll have to go through, including a CON, just to, to kind of fall back to what they're talking about, so that-
Do they have to do that?
I think so.
They have to have a con, in order to close a hospital. They cannot do it in laterally.
Right. Okay. I mean, I've heard two different answers to that question, so-
This is what Rob Jepson told us.
Right. There have been a couple of different answers, though. And part of, so part of the reason I, I can't give you that response tonight, is there are, you know, suddenly cards in play that were not in play a week ago, that we want to see, you know, which, which one of those is correct? And is there a way to work on that issue that's getting a lot of attention right now? Excuse me, to bring attention to this, this issue, too.
Okay. And I just think that, you know, if, given that's the case, and given that, I don't know if there's any legislative angle that's going to play out in the next session, and assuming that that legislative angle depends on the votes of Montgomery County legislators, that I'd rather have them beware of, be aware of what we want now, and what might be an important thing that they want out of a vote associated with bills on how emergency rooms and other hospital facilities are set up.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, one of the issues of what happened in Prince George's, as was talked about, is that there was the lack of communication about this potential, or about this closure that they have made a decision about. And so, and I know that County Executive Baker is very concerned about what's going on. There is likely to be legislation. And so, I, you know, I just think that I need to check in with some of my colleagues that work in Prince George's, and also just get a sense of where they're headed with this. But again, it's the issue of not having quick communication is an important point.
Great. So just a comment, and then one more, well, two comments, on this again. So, you know, let's not get to January, and, and be surprised that we missed some opportunity. You know, so if we hear about a bill moving on hospitals, and we, we hear that it doesn't include anything associated with ours, that that would be a-
Right.
A concern. The other issue I wanted to raise was just that, in the process of talking about legislation for us to put forward to MML, one of the things that I really hoped that we would put forward was the idea of essentially a municipal innovation fund, to propose to the state, or to the governor, that we create a, or that he, they create some sort of funds, some sort of grant funds, to allow municipalities to innovate in some way, with some state assistance, to achieve some state goal. So, you know, they pick the goals, they pick the, they set, they define the playing field, but municipalities would have access to funds to help try to deliver those goals in, in different ways that municipalities could do so. So, we don't have that as a bill that went forward to, through the MML system. But I'd love to see us pursue it independently, however we might do so.
Very interesting concept. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
You know, on the subject of freestanding emergency rooms, when we talked, Jared and the mayor and myself met with Eric Waynesness and Rob Jepson last week, Rob was, Mr. Jepson was reporting out on, mentioned the, some of the preliminary drafts being released on the, by, by the people working on the freestanding emergency rooms. And he said that he liked what he saw there. He thought it was very practical and down-to-earth, and there was no agenda behind it. It seemed to be very straightforward, professional recommendations, focusing that they think there's a case can be made for rural areas, and very high-density urban areas, that they think that, that it makes sense to put a restriction, that only hospitals can have freestanding emergency rooms, which would for, prevent third-party companies from just deciding they want to open one in somebody's backyard. And that it also, if a hospital does it, it has to be within their, within their market area. They can't be opening up an emergency room in some other hospital's marketing area. So, those are just some of the aspects that, but I was most impressed by the fact that he seemed to be sort of pretty comfortable with the idea that it could be something that staff, at that level, at this point, before it gets into the politics, feels could, could actually function. And they both agreed that, he and Mr. Waynesness, that this is the, the direction nationally, that health care services are moving, which is the idea of freestanding facilities. Just, just some thoughts.
And I would, I would comment that the Health Care Commission is very professional, very objective, and very thorough in the work that they do. So it will be good to see their final product.
Yes, it will. Particularly for, in our case.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Thanks. Well, on this topic, as Councilmember Mail brought it up, I checked on the Maryland Health Care Commission website, and I see that Rob Jepson was appointed to the working group, and that they met on August 28th, and have another meeting scheduled for October 6th. Then, there is a draft online, and I sent you all the link as we were sitting here.
Well, thanks. You're amazing.
No, just how to use the web.
The interweb.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. It's great to see everyone.
Yes, likewise.
And I'll say, we collectively look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Me too. And I will get you that update.
Our final item this evening, starting at 10:41.
Hurry, pretty soon we're going to be late for the morning meeting.
Pretty soon, there'll be no point going to bed. Discussion of appointment process for city boards, commissions, and committees. We've wanted to have this discussion for some time, and now's the time.
So, may I say that the council has been interested in, in starting a discussion about committees generally? And I am happy that this could be the first part of the discussion, because there's a fairly immediate need to address the appointment process, because we're having some issues with how it's working right now, and, and I'm glad that you'll have the opportunity to discuss this. So, as you know, the council used to interview candidates in a, at a public forum in the council meeting. That was challenging in some ways, and I guess those who've been on the council for a long time can talk about what some of the problems were.
It became fairly rote, and didn't lead to the types of discussion that maybe you wanted to have. It just became kind of pro forma.
Right, right. So, sometimes what happened is, when a candidate comes to the council, once they're here, no one's going to say, "No, we're not going to appoint you." It's, I mean, that hasn't been the practice in the past, years, this is years ago. So, the, the council decided to stop doing interviews, and to have a little more informal process, where the ward council member might contact an applicant to get a sense of them, or another council member would. And then, over time, that fell off a bit to a less formal process, even where, but there is naturally a review of the application that's received, and the resume, and a little discussion via email, and decisions by consensus. But sometimes it's difficult to, sometimes there needs to be, I think, more of a conversation about an applicant, and reasons for appointing one or another, or appointing everyone. And, and there are some issues around what your expectations are for, for applicants of committees. And I posed a series of questions that may help drive your discussion, such as, would you like to reestablish some sort of interview process, either by panels of three, in a council meeting, before a council meeting? Do you want to be a little more firm about requiring applicants to attend a meeting before they apply? Not a city council meeting, but a meeting of the committee, board, or commission? Do you want to think a little bit more about the criteria for why you might appoint one person and not another, or how you make those decisions? Because diversity is a concern. Ward diversity, of course, but really, a wide variety of diversity questions are, are of interest, in terms of getting people to be more engaged. Is the council interested in hearing from a chair of a committee as to concerns, or, or support for an applicant? And that has its pros and cons, certainly. And finally, is there an interest in having some slightly more formal role for staff to, to be able to provide an opinion when it seems necessary? And a checkbox that says of concern, or support, or no, no concern, I guess, really more than support? So, those are some of the questions I was hoping you would think about, and, and maybe provide some guidance that we could go with in the short term. And then, as you continue to talk about what, how you want the committees to, how you want to reorganize things, and what your expectations are, we could have those discussions on, in future months. But, but for now, I'm hoping you'll address the appointment process question.
Okay, thanks. And I'll start. I looked at your five questions, and I had fairly firm opinions on four of them, and so I'll let you know what they are. Basically, I said yes to numbers one, two, four, and five. I think we need some kind of interview process, and I don't, I don't think it should be in council meetings. I think probably the best way is before meetings, around a separate evening, and it could be a panel of three members. I think the applicants should be required to attend a meeting before they're appointed. I think we should take into consideration the recommendations of the board committee or commission chair, who could have some conversation with the members of the, of whatever the board commission or committee is, so that we have some input, particularly after they've attended a meeting, to just get a sense of whether they really understand what's going on, and whether there are any concerns that have come up. And I think we should take into consideration the recommendation of staff. I think all of these are just part of what goes into the whole process of the council deciding. I think that question three, the weight on the experience and qualifications, ward of residence, diversity, other factors, I think those are things that we always try to take into consideration. And it just depends on the individual circumstances, and how much luck maybe we've been having to get people to be on a certain group, and how many vacancies there are. And so, you know, you're, you're much more likely to say, "Oh, another one from ward, say, for example, one, you know, another one, but we've still got, you know, a couple vacancies, and so people can look for people from those other wards as well," as opposed to, "Well, there's only one spot left, and there's only five slots total, and gee, there's three of them for one ward already, and we don't want to do a fourth one." You know, it just depends on the circumstances. So I think all of those things would be good to do. Councilmember Mail?
I fully support the idea of requiring attendance at a meeting of the committee or commission that they're seeking to be on, unless, of course, it's a newly-created one. I don't support having council interviews, but I would fully support having a staff interview, or an informational interview, having staff record a 10-minute video explaining what it means to be on a committee or council, so that, or a committee or commission or task force, so that you don't have to repeat a lot of content, but then it allows quick Q and A with folks back and forth. We have a multimillion-dollar TV department, we should put them to use. If we need a committee for that, we could establish one. I would support using, not that it has to slow the process of actually putting people on the committees, but I would support a process of, let's say, quarterly, having swearing in committee members through an oath of office, where they promise to provide good service, and, you know, otherwise, seek to pursue the interests of the community, through whatever the mission or function is of the, of the task force. That's an easy way to just make sure that people know that, you know, we take this seriously. I fully support staff trying to define a staff role for supporting the commissions, committees, and task forces. And I also support the idea of having council give a specific charge to every committee every year, so that we know what it is that they're supposed to be doing, whether that's safe roadways, or the committee on the environment, or our standing committees, like the tree commission. Having the council say, and it doesn't have to take up a lot of time, it could be driven by staff recommendations, it can be something we develop by email beforehand, what are the key questions that committee, commission X needs to do. the key questions that committee, commission X needs to do, but we say, "We want you to help us answer this question. That's, that's what we've asked you to spend your time doing." And associated with that, I think we currently, I think committees operate by default as, like, "Let's meet once a month for a couple of hours," and I think that's one of the worst possible ways to get work done. If you asked me to spend two hours a month working on an important project that I do at work over the course of a year, or maybe longer, I would completely forget what I was doing last month, and I wouldn't think it was a priority. And so I love the idea of us saying, "Hey, in the spring, we wanna talk about trees," or, "In the fall, we wanna talk about whatever the other issue is, policing." And we should set a time, a limited time period, and ask people to spend more time in a shorter period of time, so that they can actually get something and make more progress during a course of meetings, and then be free, you know, then, then be, then be free of what otherwise becomes a, you know, a burden with uncertain return. So it doesn't mean that we have to mandate that, but I think we should make it clear to, to committees that it's up to them to define the work structure that's effective, and that we believe that spending just two hours together once a month is probably not the best way to be able to make forward progress on whatever issue they might work on. Thank you.
That's what I'm seeing.
Thank you, Mayor. Right off, I'd like to jump on the bandwagon and agree with Councilmember Mail that we should be giving a charge to each committee on what we expect from them. I think the, the idea of agreeing to some goals, whether it be on a quarterly basis or semi-annual basis, is important. I think that one of the problems we've had with committees in the past is that they didn't know what we were expecting, and, and that was because we didn't know what we were expecting either. So I think that would, would force the discussion. And it would also require feedback from the committee on how they, how they were, how well they were attaining the goals and what problems they faced. And certainly, as part of setting that goal process, it would involve not just the, the council and staff, but also the committee themselves, to a great extent that they would be setting their own goals, maybe, but it would be the, the council concurring or not with those goals. We've done that to some degree, but I think we need to be more organized in the way we do it, and, and better being across the board with all the committees. Just running down the list of questions, I don't see the need to reinstitute the interview process. I've certainly been here a number of years and, and been through that, and it is nice to meet the people, but it is an awful lot of time spent to, at the end of the day, say, "Okay, we'll, we'll accept this person as a committee member." A very rare case would we not appoint someone. Occasionally, we do get more than the, than there are, more applicants than there are open positions, but I think we've been quite able to handle that through emails through the last few years, and so again, I, I do not support that. I have said before, and still agree with the fact that people should attend the committee before they actually get approved. I would think that people would want to attend the committee meetings so that they would know whether they really wanna be on that committee. I know that we've recommended that recently, and, but I think it should be a requirement. Does the council wish to establish formal criteria on, I, I think, I think it's a tough one. I agree wholeheartedly with the desire to have qualifications and diversity factors. I think it's, it's easier to say it than it is to actually set the criteria, but I would be interested in us discussing that more and coming up with a way of doing that. I think the, the bottom line is, those are all those things that we want on the committees with the diversity and, and the ward residents and, and economic diversity, all the different things. So I look forward to discussion on that. I don't, I can't agree or disagree with actually saying something right now. Would I consider the recommendation of the board chair or the staff, certainly, and I think we do now, and I think we do it to the extent necessary? I, I don't see that we need to get a, a formal opinion back from the, the board chairs. I think the process works fine the way it is now in that regard. Again, I think the board chairs and any committee members should know ahead of time who is applying before they are appointed, and I certainly would wanna take into consideration any comments and feedback that they have or that the staff has, but I don't think that we need to have, again, a real formal process for that. And I'm also concerned that, as Ms. Carpenter said, there are, there is a downside to that too. I think it's, it's good to see changes in the boards and commissions and committees, and sometimes existing committee members are resistant to that change, especially if they can foresee that coming. So, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I guess I have a bit of a different take. First of all, Jesse, you mentioned that there's been running into some problems, but you're, the, the write-up here says, "Other than the one problem of having to choose among too many applicants, are there other issues that have arisen?" Because I don't understand what problems we're trying to solve here.
From, from my perspective, occasionally there, I would like to see a little bit more discussion about how a decision is made as to who is selected from among a group of people applying for one position. Sometimes I think doing that over email is, is challenging. I think it's, I'm not sure it's the best way to have that conversation, frankly. I'm, I'm not sure what makes more sense, but it, it...
You don't think we should make that decision over email?
Yes. I, I, that's almost what I'm saying. I, I would almost, I guess it is. I, I would almost prefer that if, if you have to have a discussion about that, that you could have a short closed session discussion if you're making decisions, so that you could talk it out back and forth and not make it, not always knowing all the facts, or not having everybody, sometimes it's difficult for everybody to be paying attention to what's going on over email, and, and...
Yeah, okay, but I mean, how often, in my experience, is that the, the frequency of having more people to appoint to a committee has happened only occasionally. I mean, when we first established the Committee on the Environment, we had lots of people we could not pick because we just filled it up, and, and we worked on that as a group, I think, fairly informally, and came up with solutions.
Right.
And I think recently, there's, there was one committee that we had three people for two positions, and we had to choose that.
Maybe...
Otherwise, I'm not sure I understand what else, what other is, go ahead.
One of the things that I've, I hear, I guess, is kind of being a little bit on the outside of, of the committee choice, is it, it feels to me that, except for in those situations where there are two, more people than the number of slots available, it's more like, "Oh, you're just glad you get anybody, and you put 'em on."
That's what I said, sure.
And, right, but, but is that the right combination? Is, are you, you know, how does, how is that, and I think it goes to the question about the charge for the committee, and then how you use whatever comes out of the committee and, by the council. But, you know, do you have the right people together to get their, your charge followed through on? And so, I think, you know, whether or not this is gonna get there, I don't know, but, but I think that was part of the issue that has...
And let me just try and answer your question in a slightly different way.
Okay.
I think there have been instances where it wasn't just a question of, you know, there were, there were too many to appoint. There have been instances where there were, say, one or two openings, and people applied, and the process that we have had has led to maybe talking with somebody and saying, "Oh gee, they sound fine," and then getting other input from staff or the committee, that then causes maybe some second thoughts, and trying to kind of have that discussion among the council in a, in a little bit more formal way, so that people understand what's going on. So I feel like, gee, I know an instance or two where things were a little bit sticky in terms of trying to figure it out, but maybe all of the council members aren't even aware of that, because it was, it was different types of conversations that didn't involve us.
But would it be legal to hold that discussion in a closed session?
I think absolutely. I think it's a personnel issue. I, I think it's absolutely, we can double-check we've done, that the council has done in the past.
I think we would have to double-check that on whether committee members' count is personnel.
Yeah, and I guess, I question, you know, who gets to decide? I mean, if it would be all seven of us? I, frankly, I just don't wanna have anything to do with, with interviews on some of these committees. So I think one of the things we're, a mistake we're making here is that we're just looking at all of these entities, and what, there's about 13 of them, or 14 or 15, as the same. Now, some of these are commissions, plus the, the, there's the Arts and Humanities, the Commemoration, the Ethics Commission, and, and the Tree Commission, and, and, and COLTA as well. So there's five of them that had the word "commission" in them. But then also, there's the Grants Review Committee and the Facade Advisory Board. All of these are entities where we delegate authority. We ask them to make decisions for us, and they go ahead and do, do the work, like the Arts and Humanities Commission doesn't come back to us and say, "Do you think the such-and-such an artist would be good to have on a program?" And the Facade Advisory Board does its work and makes an annual report to us, and we don't second-guess what it does. The same with COLTA. I think there, in those cases, we have to be careful as to make sure we have people who are actually literally got, got some qualifications to do that. But when it comes to something like the Recreation Committee, or the Safe Roadways Committee, both of which are well, fairly well-run, how am I, I mean, what are the criteria for somebody being on those two committees? I mean, I, and, and who am I to judge of that? I mean, I just don't wanna waste my time. If, if I have to choose between people, like with the Commemoration Committee, we decided no more than two people from any one ward, and I had three candidates. So I had the, I personally interviewed each of them face-to-face and made my decision on which two I wanted to recommend, and those were the two that were appointed. So that was a case where I had to do that. I figured that out all by myself, without having to talk to everybody on, also on the city council. So, I mean, some of these others, like the Personal Appeal Board and the Ethics Committee, meet on an as-needed basis. Ethics Commission, and the nuclear, I mean, I would say, yeah, in a lot of cases, I'm just grateful that I have people that wanna serve on, on any of these committees or commissions from Ward Six, and I do my best to try to recruit them. And if they wanna serve, and I say, I mean, I'm not gonna second-guess, a lot of these people are, are new people who've just moved into the city, and they've maybe lived here a year or two, that's fine with me. I mean, I, I don't know what else to ask them. As far as having them attend a meeting, I find it ironic, because I've been trying to get that idea approved ever since I've been on the city council, and it's always been poo-pooed, "Oh, well, that's not really necessary." Now, all of a sudden, everybody thinks it's a good idea. If you wanna have them to do that, I, that's not a, and it's, it's not too big of a burden to ask somebody to, 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 to do that for just the reasons that have been cited already tonight. But, I mean, what I find is that we get people appointed, and they find that the committee's requires more time than they thought, or it's just, you know, or things like that, and so, so, so they quit. And there's always vacancies in almost every committee we have. So I, I'm not sure that making it more complicated than it already is is gonna help us.
I think if I can just, I think, I wanna say that in cases where we have multiple people and it's difficult to make a decision, I think it's important that the council, my recommendation is that the council discuss it.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, that's, those are special cases, but...
It doesn't happen all the time. It's rare, but, but when it happens, it, it would help.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Mail and Siemens that we need to have clearer council direction for each of the committees, or maybe for many of the committees, maybe not all of them. And I think, maybe I'll disagree slightly with some of the things that my colleague said. I actually think maybe having some interview process would be a good idea. I think I agree with the city clerk that email limits the conversation we can have. I don't think it maybe necessitates all the members of the city council, and maybe different committees necessitate, as Councilmember Schultz said, some different knowledge and expertise. In particular, I think having, in some instances, the chair or members of the current committee maybe be part of the interview process or part of the review process would be important, because I think, at least I'll speak for myself, I feel fairly removed from many of these committees. I don't know all of the folks who serve on the committees, the skill level they have, or what the committee itself perceives it needs moving forward. And so I think having them be more engaged in the process would be useful. I suggest we maybe look at something where individual council members might volunteer to be liaisons for a number of different committees, and then be, and we could swap back and forth, like at, maybe yearly or six months, whatever makes sense, and then be part of an interview process with members of that committee. So that's what I, I think that's it. And having them required to attend a meeting, I think is a good idea.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Jesse, I appreciate you putting the work into this. I'm kinda torn. You know, I served on the Commission Landlord Tenet Affairs for a long time. Some of these proposals are good, like having people attend meetings before they're actually appointed. I'd like them to attend more than just one meeting, 'cause sometimes you get people like Councilmember Schultz said, that find these committees or commissions or boards just not their cup of tea. And it would be much easier to find that out in the beginning, rather than you train people, you, at least in COLTA's case, they go through hearings, and then all of a sudden, the people disappear. So then you have to try to find someone else. So I think, you know, if we had candidates attend at least two meetings, that would be great. I'd also think it's a good idea to have the committee chair at least give a recommendation. It doesn't mean that the council has to accept the recommendation, but it gives you some idea of can they work with the person, how the person's gonna fit into the commission or the board. I don't know if I want to manage any committees. I just, I mean, I, I have, that's, I, I don't have the time or the bandwidth to do that.
Yeah, me neither.
The other thing is, I would like, at least in the case for the Commission Landlord Tenet Affairs, to have them weigh in on housing issues. They could give us an opinion, like, for example, what happened at New Hampshire Towers. If they just wrote an opinion while that contract was being written, I think a lot of what happened would not have happened, because we were very surprised, I was on the commission at that time, when that deal was cut. And a lot of members, and... was cut. And a lot of members, and we have attorneys that are volunteers on the commission, they couldn't believe it. I can't call myself an attorney, but other attorneys could not believe that that deal went forward. So I think there's, there is a lot of expertise with housing in the city. Colta does housing, and that's it all the time. And I think they would know what would be a good deal for tenants and when the landlords are getting, getting their way with whatever situation it is. But the rest of the proposals, I don't, I mean, if staff wants to do a, a three, five-minute video for council, I think that's okay, but, I mean, I, I don't want the committee, commission, boards to become a bigger thing that they are now. I just would, you know, it's difficult to find people to serve on these committees. Having more requirements would make it, for my ward, even more difficult. I just don't want to go down that, that alley.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. So I'll go back to the exchange that Councilmember Schultz and City Clerk Carpenter had, where they talked about exceptional cases. It's my observation that 90% of the time, maybe even 95% of the time, the appointments are not difficult, they're not controversial, they're not competitive in the sense of having, having too many applicants. I, I think my, my take is that creating a framework that applies uniformly, well, number one, wouldn't work, to which I'll come back in a second, but number two, is unnecessary, that it's really having provisions in place for those exceptional cases when you have multiple applicants, or something perhaps controversial in some way, or an applicant whose qualifications are unclear, that, that you think about the framework just for those special cases. I, I've found that, I, I would find certain aspects here to be difficult. For instance, committee chairs and committee members can go out and recruit new members for the committees, and I think that's a great thing. They're going to maybe recruit friends, they're going to recruit within their own networks typically. But I would hate to see the, a committee chair given any sort of veto power over an applicant, simply because I can think of one committee that I was on where there was a certain degree of factionalism, and that surfaced in the election of the chair, and it was over the hospital issue, and there were divided opinions there. So I would be very reluctant to give the chair any kind of veto power, but we do recognize that any member of a committee is going to be interested in recruiting additional members, not always, but very often. I, I am concerned that sometimes we end up with people on committees who are very focused on particular concerns that are narrow and don't match the broader task of the committee. I was, served on the hospital committee with someone who was in that category, very focused on homeopathic medicine, very insistent about it, and it didn't help the committee get its work done. In some cases, including ones that have come before us within recent months, we find out about disharmonious operations within a committee. Maybe certain members are very insistent that their way is the right way, and that other people on their committee that they're serving with are not, don't have sufficient background to be on those committees, and that's a very unfortunate situation. I'm not sure how we could screen for that kind of situation in advance, even by doing interviews. Yeah, it's, it's attractive to say that people should attend meetings in advance. It's, it's funny, just thinking here, the four committees that I've served on, each of them was Greenfield, that was newly appointed. There wasn't an existing committee, two city manager search committees, no, I'm sorry, city manager search committee, the hospital committee, the TASD committee, and Tacoma Junction Task Force. So there's, there's no, there are no meetings to attend there. So you, that's part of what I started to say earlier, that you can't completely have a systematic approach here. In other cases, the committees meet very infrequently, Personnel Appeals Board, the Grants Review Committee, their work is clustered into a few months typically. So it's not practical to have people attend meetings in advance. So what I'm getting at in general is what I started with, which actually, as I said, the clerk and my colleague, and our colleague, Councilmember Schultz, were saying, that, that really have a framework in place for those exceptional cases, when there are multiple applicants, unclear qualifications of the applicants, some other complicating circumstance. But my, my main concern is, is operations that don't go the way they should because of insufficient guidelines provided to committee, committees and members who don't get along for some reason. And I don't have any kind of particular remedy there. So those are, those are my remarks.
I'm tempted to sum up where I think we are, but I think Councilmember Mail has another comment.
I do. I'm happy to support what Councilmember Schultz and, and I think the city clerk and Councilmember Grimes and probably others said as well, which is, when we have a contested race, Councilmember Stewart said the same thing, go ahead and put us into a closed session or some other framework to try to evaluate how to pick the right number. I'd just add a few more ideas. One, I think it would really be helpful to have a basic Q&amp;A document from city clerk to all committee members, you know, things you, what does it mean to be on a committee? You know, who are your, who are your resources, city staff, council member? Who do you talk to? What's the role of the city clerk? Like, just sort of basics or support questions that apply to all committees. I would favor us going to a standardized committee size of eight members, or somewhere around eight members, and then we'd have more options to convene and talk about who we're going to put on committees. I'd be happy to have a couple of alternates. So we put on eight, we have two alternates, and if a couple people stop showing up, we have a process to, to replace them with alternates. I would support having committee chairs through, selected through some sort of process that involved meeting with council or a three-person sort of style interview that the mayor talked about. So that way, at least, there's an opportunity for vetting the ideas, the priorities of the chairship with, with the council, as opposed to having each individual member interviewed. And I would support term limits for chairs as well, as just a standard default. In terms of that idea of selecting chairs, happily take, you know, people who are unanimously endorsed by their colleagues. It doesn't have to be exclusively council, but a process that allows that, that, that give and take and allows council to really, you know, sort of endorse not just person in a role as a facilitator and a, and a chair, but potentially some of the ideas that would come with them as well. Last idea I'll just throw on the table is that, and I don't think we do this enough now, but particularly for new committee members, letting them know that the council member who represents the ward in which they live is a resource, and that if the committee, if it's unclear what the committee's doing, if they have questions, if they're feeling frustrated, if, you know, if, 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 whatever the things are, that we should be connected to that person to do, to provide support, to help them have a successful term on the committee. And I, I would be very surprised if, if any of my colleagues were to, would decline that opportunity to, to try to help people succeed. So just think of the first six months as a, as a, as a trial where we're trying to help them get, get up and running and, and be successful. And I, and again, like, a Q&amp;A document could be the best way. If you're new on a committee, you should reach out to your council member or reach out to the clerk, and the clerk will connect you to the council member to, to be able to talk through ways to make sure you're happy, productive, X, Y, and Z. Thanks.
Some, some good ideas there at the end. One reaction I had to some of the potential structural changes is that many of these committees have gone through a process of having bylaws, and in those bylaws, they set out various things like how the chairs operate, or the rotation, or those kinds of things, so that if there were going to be any kind of attempt at some uniformity that the council wanted to do, we would probably be in the position of having to kind of override or undo those bylaws that we've asked them to do. And, and in terms of the numbers, that there have been some different reasons for different ones having different sizes, and I think some of those are good ideas to have different sizes. What I was hearing in general from the discussion was that everybody agreed that attendance at a board meeting before appointment was a good idea. I'll say that I-
At a committee meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll say that I agree with the Councilmember Mail's thing that, about the charge to the group from the, that discussion with the council. A lot of people agreed with that, and it sounded like there was some emerging consensus that, for the, the smaller percentage of cases where there are some more difficulties in terms of how the numbers work, or the, or the process, that there may, there needs to be kind of a template for how the council works through that, but that in general, there was not a willingness to say, okay, set up an interview process, informal incorporation of feedback from the board chair, from staff, but that there can continue to be kind of that, that informal input, and as something escalates to something that might need that higher level of scrutiny, that there's a little bit more formal process in place. Does that capture the conversation?
I think so.
Do you have what you need?
Yes, I, I have-
Not necessarily what you thought you were going to get.
I have what I need to get me through the next few months, anyway.
Okay.
Is there any point you wanted to lobby before, for reconsideration?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Not at 11:21.
She'll let you know tomorrow morning.
Yeah. She'll, she'll tell you at 8:30 when you're here. Okay, so that finishes up the last item, and we are adjourned. A reminder that we are due back here at 8:30 tomorrow morning for the continuation of the closed session.
You will need to go into closed session again at 8:30.
So at 8:30, we will be here to go into closed session. And then, don't forget, Wednesday evening, we have a joint meeting with the Committee on the Environment, and that's at 7:15 or 7:30?
7:15, in the hydrangea room.
We're going to be in the hydrangea room. Yes.
Okay.
Pretty cool.